Call a regular meeting of the Pennington County Commission to order. And just remind people to please silence your cell phones. The agendas are in the back. Speaker request forms are in the back also. If you want to speak on a particular matter, return that speaker request form up to Holly on your right. We'll have a moment of silent reflection and pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Lassiter.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Travis. Next item is to review and approve the agenda. Just a note that we've been requested to pull item 12B. That is on the legal document with the state for the crisis stabilization. Just needs further legal review. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. I've got a motion by Commissioner LaCroy, second by Commissioner Lassiter to approve the agenda. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consent agenda. Holly.
For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items are removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of July 6, 2021. Approval of the minutes of the 2022 budget hearings from June 24th and 25th. Approval of the minutes of the special work session from June 28, 2021. Number eight is approval of the third quarter 2021 local emergency management performance grant with the state of South Dakota submitted by Emergency Management. And finally, number nine is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of June 2021 from Human Resources and the Fire Administration.
Are there any members of the public that would like to have any item on the consent calendar removed for discussion? Seeing none, is there any commission member that wants to have any item removed? Mary Nunn, I'd take a motion to approve five through nine on the consent calendar.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Lassiter, second by Commissioner LaCroy. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number 10. We have a request from the Eastern Pennington County Ambulance District. Carrie Shell is here for the funding for a new cardiac monitor. I'd ask Carrie to come forward. So Carrie, we've seen your written request, but why don't you just give us an explanation of what you're looking for and what your need is?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Carrie Shell, and I'm with the Eastern Pennington County Ambulance District. In the paperwork that I submitted to you guys, you will see that there is a $28,000 quote in there. What that is, is I worked recently, in the last two years is how long it took to get donations to purchase one cardiac monitor. Our other current monitors were obsolete, which meant we had two Philips monitors. If one were to go down, we had a second one to back up. We swapped one of those to get down to the $28,000. The other one, if something were to happen, they will not work on it. It will obviously be no good to any of us. What I am hoping to get today is a second monitor. We're having a higher call volume this year than normal. We have two ambulances that we are depending on to make sure that we have monitors in both rigs. What I'm, I went in front of the city council of Wall at their last meeting, last month, and they are willing to match the funds of the county. What the purpose with that was, I'm hoping for a little bit of that American Rescue Plan funding, but even with that, I have tried to get more funding. Our tax levy, we're maxed out. We roughly get $150,000 a year through that. The city of Wall gives us $50,000, and with that $200,000, that doesn't cover our payroll. And I submitted our payroll as well. Our EMTs in rural Wall are making $10 an hour. That's it. They are basically a volunteer status. Many of them have other jobs. Many of them are on other ambulance services. And this, thankfully, we have a slower call volume than a lot of the areas that they're working in, but they're not making a lot. And so what I'm hoping to do is have the equipment that they need. This is a need on a rural ambulance service. We had a call this morning down to the Badlands. We received zero funding from the Badlands. No radios, nothing. And that gets very difficult because the ones who are paying for the tax district are not the ones using the services. A lot of it are tourists. Well, my luck, I would have the ambulance out on a tourist call and a local would need the monitor. I want to make sure that we have two monitors. This has been, like I said, a two and a half year process. I've went after FEMA grant. If you guys have been in on any of those, you go in with schools, law enforcement, fire districts, and you propose. Well, at that time, there was numerous ones that were in there, and it gets very difficult trying to fight for the funding, and all of us have big needs that we all have to fight for.
So Carrie, you are a taxing district.
Correct.
So what you're telling us is that the amount of dollars that you're bringing in, even as a taxing district, is not covering your payroll?
Correct.
So has there been any consideration given of raising?
We are maxed out on.
You're maxed out?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Ross, connect.
Carrie, what, how big's your district as far as coverage?
Ooh, that is a good question. I'm terrible on the ambulance side. It can take up to, I always go hours. It could take up to two hours to get to our furthest location. We follow the Cheyenne River up to Bridger, and then we go down through the Cottonwood area, and then down through the Badlands National Park.
And what percent of calls would you say are out of town in the county opposed to being right there in the municipality of Wall?
I have that. The city of Wall actually asked me to put this together. So what was submitted to you guys is we've had 122 calls. Forty-four of those are actual local calls. That means those individuals are actually paying for the service. Forty-eight have been tourist calls. Seventeen have been local income, or low income, excuse me. And then 13 have been outside of Wall, which means those are locals in the rural areas that are paying for the service. We've, so out of those 122, 86 of them were in city limits, and 36 were outside of city limits. Because we get questioned that a lot of how many are on I-90 versus how many are in city limits, and that's, I went through, looked at every single call.
So then if you look at the last three years, what type of increase are you seeing from year to year to year? I assume it's a steady increase?
It's a steady increase. I think a lot, it would vary because of COVID. Obviously, last year, we didn't have the tourists. We still had quite a few calls, but nothing like we're seeing this year. Everybody's wanting out.
Last question. What's the life expectancy of one of these monitors?
That, I have no clue.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lassiter.
Question for you, Carrie. Do y'all bill insurance on any of these calls?
Yes. Every, I shouldn't say every call. Say I needed the ambulance, but you called, and I refused. We do not bill them for that. Now, if you call and you request it, I send you a $100 bill because you requested it and you refused. Every transport gets billed.
Okay, so you bill out to their insurance?
Yes.
So what's your overall operating budget for the year? Because I heard you say something about $150,000 for the tax, for the levied, and then $50,000 from Wall, but overall?
Overall, our tax, just our payroll is $220,000, and that has to do with the payroll and the overtime. We don't have a lot of EMTs out in the area. We're blessed, I should say. We have 20 EMTs, but they don't always pick up.
Gotcha. How much, how much of the billing is uncollected?
That is, sorry, I have another sheet on that one.
I asked that question, but I passed the note.
I'm not scary. Okay, sorry. Then I just mixed all my sheets up. Okay. Currently in collections is $82,378. Uncollectable is $9,941. Uncollectable are ones who have passed away. Aging accounts is $54,859.20. And our payroll for 2020 was $218,756.94.
So on your aging ones, how, how long before you write those off?
We do not write them off.
Oh, you don't?
Nope.
Okay.
Unfortunately, we can't afford to. In collections, at $100, they're in collections, but they don't send an actual bill to them unless it's $110. It's not worth collections time to go after. And that gets very, very touching, I guess.
Okay, other questions? So the request to us is to, is to match what the, well, the city has said they will match the amount that we give. So the request, I think, for us is $14,140.32.
That is correct. And the quote that's in front of you is the exact quote of what we just purchased that I was able to get off of township donations and local donations. Strikers said they will match it. They have since increased their rates, but they will abide by our quote from the prior invoice.
Chairman.
Commissioner Haddcock.
So three-fourths of your calls are in the city, though, aren't they? And they only want to pay half?
Correct. I was advised from them to come to you guys.
Okay. And then you said you're maxed out on your levy, meaning no matter what you do, you cannot, Cindy, will you, yeah. Thank you, Ms. Cindy.
Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor. I was just going to ask, don't you guys do a special assessment rather than an actual levy?
Ours, I would say yes, a special assessment, but we are maxed out on that.
Okay, by statute, according to what your actual mill rate is?
From every?
That's what I, I would need to look at that in order to answer.
Okay. Everything from the county has says we cannot increase it. I sit down and every year have to calculate the exact percentage, and I should have brought that with me today, but it cannot be increased at all. They say even if it's a hundredth off, it will, they avoid the tech, the special assessment.
I'd need to actually look at the, at what the rate is now versus what you have for taxable property in 2021.
Okay.
To 2022.
And then if we wanted to fund this, what, where would you suggest that if we wanted to help fund the 15,000, what?
It, it could be just a donation to the ambulance district from the general fund.
We wouldn't use our contingency for like the commission or something?
Do you have any other plans for contingency, Holly?
Not at this point.
Then it could come from contingency.
I think that makes more sense than, you know, if this is a thing that commission wanted to do instead of just to me. That way, it's not a precedent, it's just something that we believe as commissioners that we'd like to help with.
Mr. Chair. Are you done? Commissioner LaCroy.
I, I'll make a motion, but I'd like the floor afterwards if I get a second. I'd, I'd make a motion to approve the $14,140.32 from contingency fund.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second from LaCroy and Haddcock to approve the request. Is there anybody from the public that would like to have questions or comments on this? Seeing none, back to the commission. Is there any further comments? Commissioner LaCroy.
Carrie, first of all, I'd like to thank you for the, all the hard work that you've done. I mean, you've got employees that are making 10 bucks an hour and giving up their time to move forward. And, you know, we could sit here and argue and say the cities should be paid more, City Wall a little bit more than what they are, but you've got a wide district, and I think you've done some fundraising on that, and I'm sure you're going to end up doing some more. Just my experience with some, that's why I did Mr. Lassiter ask about the uncollectibles because sometimes it, you don't get paid. Maybe you can consider a higher amount than that $100. I think normal rates bump three or five. If I, don't quote me on that. It's quite a bit more than, than what you're, you guys are actually building, but that's an option to think about in the future. But that's my thought process, why I'd approve it. I normally wouldn't do this on a basis, and I don't think this commission would, but I, I think they, they see the need and during the extermin, the times that we're in, and you've put in some effort and some work to, to get what you need for your people.
Chairman.
Commissioner Haddcock.
I agree with Lloyd. The other thing I would do is look with Cindy and see if there's a different way to do the taxing district or something that would actually be able to get you some more money because, like you said, you're paying people 10 bucks an hour. Those are first responders. They're saving people life. That's huge. The other thing is you're probably going to need more equipment than just this for your, for your people. So again, if I were you, I would work with Cindy and see if you can work out that levy and how you could do it a little bit different. I know people don't like their taxes raised, but when someone gets sick or they need your help, I think they're going to be belching for you guys, again, your first responders. Because the questions that were answered on your budget and your levy, and then your just calls for service, at first, I wasn't really thinking that we should set a precedent on this or do this, but then once you told the rest of the story, it makes sense to help you at this, this time. But again, I would work with Cindy, and she's pretty smart about those levies and, and how to work with it with the, with the, what am I trying to say, property taxes and stuff, and that might be helpful for the future. Again, because you want to take care of your first responders, not just now, but for the future.
Thank you.
I might also point out to the commission that Carrie and her husband are, truly represent rural America. I think both of them are also on the WASTA Volunteer Fire Department.
And Wall.
Yep, and Wall.
As volunteers strictly. We don't get paid.
As volunteers. Her husband's here about a month ago when we were hearing the requests from the various volunteer fire departments. So we appreciate your service, the commitment that you've made to doing this. So thank you. So now I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Commissioners, just to let you know, the contingency has to be done by resolution according to statute, so we'll put, we'll prepare the resolution and put it on for approval at the next meeting.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly.
Thanks, Carrie. Item number 11. Cindy Muller, please.
Item number 11 is a special request, or a request for a special malt beverage, on-sale malt beverage license for an event that is to be held on July 31st. And it's the Rushmore German Club that is requesting the special license for the event.
I've got a motion by Commissioner Haddcock to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second by Commissioner LaCroy. Are there any members of the public that want to speak relative to this? Back to the commission. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B.
Item B is the 2022 provisional budget, and I believe you all have the information that I had prepared at the last meeting. And the provisional budget does need to be approved before the end of July.
So, Commissioner, I, what I'm going to suggest is that we adopt the provisional budget in the amount of the $115,43,109. This does not include the secondary requests or the FTEs. I would suggest that we take that matter up a month from now. In the meantime, we'll have an opportunity to meet with various departments, try to figure out priorities. Obviously, we don't have enough money to cover everything that was requested, so.
Chairman.
Commissioner Haddcock.
And make that motion on the base budget of $150,043,009. Just to approve that today.
Second. I've got a motion by Commissioner Haddcock, second by Commissioner Lassiter. Further discussion? Any item, any people from the public wishing to address this? Back to the commission. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Chairman, you.
Thanks, Cindy.
One thing. If I could, thank Cindy for setting up that base budget and giving us all the information we need for the, the rest of the budget, but it takes a lot of work to get this done. So we appreciate you and your team that really help us, and Ms. Holly for teaching us what you teach her. So thank you, Holly. We had a little bit of a meeting, a couple of us yesterday. So thank you, Ms. Holly, for taking your time out and reiterating some of the stuff for us.
Mike Cool, item number, let's see, where are we? No, we're on 12C, jail study project.
12.
A.
Stabilization.
What's that?
A.
How do you do A when you don't have B?
Oh, 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 I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
A.
I don't know what I do.
Gary Mallon, right. Good morning. Mike Cool, Pennington County Billings and Grounds Director. We are nearing completion of the crisis stabilization bid documents, so I'm here today to request authorization to advertise and go to bid with that project. I have brought some of the documentation here to show you how the facility, what the facility has developed into. Here is a site, combination site plan, floor plan. We've worked hard to make the building as efficient as possible. One, one feature I would like to point out is that the tech station that, which is located right here is in a central location so that they can, there can be observation of two sides of activities going on at the same time. So right now, we have a, this, this, this area here is crisis care, which we currently resides in the, in the care campus. It will be kind of a, a holding area. Everybody coming in will, will enter into that area, and then there'll be a determination made about where, what type level of care is possible. The new feature of this building is this side of the building, which is crisis stabilization. They have the ability to hold, have somebody, support somebody for up to five days, and with 16 beds potentially, to hold 16 people on this side of the facility for up to five days. This area, there is an office, administrative office area included with this, some processing rooms for people when they're coming in, staff area. This portion of the building, these are larger meeting rooms and some smaller individual meeting rooms relative to discussions, potentially competency hearings occurring in the larger rooms, individual family meetings or something going on in some of the smaller rooms. Meds rooms, IT storage. We have a, basically a prep kitchen that will, all the food for this facility, we produce at the jail and, and brought over just like the care campus currently is. This building is intended to work in coordination and with the care campus. Early hopes were that we could potentially somehow connect the two, actually. The, the problem is, is we have an, an alley with utilities running through it that, that would really escalate your costs and stuff to try and make anything like that happen. So we've done it as a standalone facility, but with easily connections across the alley from the law enforcement area that comes right into the backside here. So anybody, law enforcement, they're bringing somebody and can pull right in along the side of the building here to drop somebody off, and actually, they could take them to either side of the, whatever side of the facility is appropriate. And then also somebody, family members or somebody dropping, somebody else can bring, bring somebody up park in this area and bring them in, in through the front. Any questions relative to that floor plan and site layout?
Mr. Chair. Commissioner LaCroy.
Thanks. Could you shoot me that other, the front edge again, Mike?
Excuse me?
Front edge of the building, you moved up a little bit.
Foundation.
Oh, okay. My, my question was, just from a little bit that you've showed me is, I like the idea that you got the officer intake. Is there two intakes? One through the alley for the officers?
Yep.
And then you have residential, you have separate entrance coming in through there, right there?
So somebody?
Could bring somebody in?
Yep.
Because my concern over the care campus from day one was, we had one point of entry for crisis care and detox and so forth, and I thought that inhibited, you know, for family members, bringing in family members, it, it was a little intimidating. And I think we learned that. And so I, that's why I wanted to know about this. So that was one question. I'm glad that we're doing this, that part of that. But also, my next question is, we're going to be moving crisis care out of the care campus and over to here, so we're going to end up, we're going to have some space over there. Are we going to leave that?
We, a determination hasn't been made about that. There has been some discussion about expanding the services, other services that are already in that building, into that area, but there has not, not been any detailed discussion about.
But the plus size is we're going to have some room for counselors and so forth. Are we, right now, we look at this building, we're, we're running out of room, but we've got some extra space there, is what I'm saying.
Mr. Sheriff, I may, Kevin Towe, Pennington County Sheriff. In your answer to, or your question about the public access off here, you're right at care campus, initially, everybody going through one point of entry, working with Behavior Management Systems, BMS. We now have ours where you publicly can come in off the Kansas City side to avoid what you're talking about, so, and this will totally alleviate that. As far as the vacated space in the care campus, it's, again, it's eight beds. It's not a lot of space that we've looked at. Could we do something with detox and shuffle the pieces? And we've talked to Mike a little bit, but no final decisions were made as to what we could do, but allow us for a little bit of growth on that first floor.
So Chairman.
Commissioner Haddcock.
Do we ever do a public meeting with the neighborhood or anything, Kevin? We just, we just had enough stuff out. Did you guys have any public comments?
We have not done any public comment relative to this project. Previously, with the care campus as a whole was.
We did.
It had done some.
Yeah, we, we did. We didn't very, have very much pushback on the care camps because we had that one point of entry.
Yeah. And Mr. Sheriff, I may, the, there's been an extensive amount of media coverage on crisis stabilization and, of course, existing care campus, so.
Yes.
We did not do like we did with care campus in terms of a community meeting or neighborhood meeting, but if this is approved and moved forward, we certainly can do that.
Okay. And the other question is, so if we're moving forward, did we figure out a cost analysis on how much it was, I mean, does Behavior Management pay for all the FTEs in the building and they pay for everything going on in the building? Or what is our side for, you know, moving forward? What is our costs for the future after we get the building built, Kevin?
Mr. Sheriff, I may, the, working with Ellen Solano from the Courage Foundation, Barry Tice, myself, we've, we've built, and Behavior Management Systems, we've built a budget for what it would cost to run the facility. I don't have that in front of me, I don't recall the numbers. And we had funding streams identified. I'm trying to remember, Mike, do you recall it? All the interior maintenance, like custodial was included in that budget. Exterior facility stuff would be, you know, buildings and grounds, if I remember kind of our handshake agreement at this point. And I think the rest fell on within the budget we built for BMS, and that's a variety of funding sources. They can bill for some of it, some of it we looked for foundation support. And I don't believe at this point we've asked for any commitment from the county for dollars to sustain it.
Right. For the, this is about the bid of. For the, this is about the bid opening, but I'm just saying you're building a building and they were going to open the bids on it, not against this project, you know that, but I'd kind of like to know, moving forward, how's that going to affect our budget for next year and how much, how much that would be affecting our budget for next year?
Mr. Sheriff, I may, we'll forward the commission a copy of the draft budget we worked up, but again, I don't believe there was any commitment from Pennington County going forward in terms of sustainability in that budget, other than the commitment from Buildings and Grounds to help maintain the property outside.
I appreciate that. So, the public knows and then other people know, because they've been asking me what the funding source, basically taxpayer dollar, which in the long run, it's still taxpayer dollar where you get the funding in some of the areas anyway. But, again, I think it's money well spent, it's just nice for us moving forward to know that for Pennington County and us commissioners to look forward on our budget, so.
Your superficial little insight, right now, we're looking at the project being completed late next year.
There you go.
Won't operate much in that year. Billings and Grounds has budgeted some money for utility costs and stuff to cover that and as we're trying to define how it should operate.
That's.
To carry it through in the next year.
And that's good to know, that way, we kind of know, moving forward, where we're at, and then you can kind of get more of a guesstimate by then too.
Yep.
So, I appreciate that.
Any further questions?
Go ahead, Mike. I'll just go run through the rest of these.
Okay.
Also have some images of what the building will look like. This is the front portion of the building off of Quincy Street. The entrance would be at this location here. This is the crisis stabilization side of it. It has a, as you can see here, the rooms kind of surround a central area, so there is some clear story lighting to bring light into that area.
So, might it even look like our building may already have?
Yes. All the cues relative to design have been based off of the existing care campus building, so it will tie into that.
And where's the house that's still there? Where is it?
House would be located right over here.
And the setback?
So, this is, this is the property line with the house adjacent.
You've got enough setback for that house?
Sorry?
The city's making you do how far a setback from that house?
Uh, we've already installed all the, we had to do the perimeter fencing and stuff to help screen from that. We did that with the last project, so we're already set relative to the things we need to do to accommodate that house.
Okay.
This would be the backside of the building from the alley, that's basically service side. This is the law enforcement entrance. This is where food from the jail and laundry services will be brought in through this service entrance. This is an access point for mechanical areas in the building.
One final quick, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Lacroix.
It just came to me when you were talking about joining the buildings, because many of the clients that may be coming into the care campus after sobering up and maybe they need some treatment from the crisis care, so it'll just be like a walk across the alley. Am I correct?
Yes.
Transfer, transfer care?
Ultimately, all that works are more operational questions that I would defer to.
Sheriff. And Mr. Sheriff, I may, the, yeah, correct, and it would flow both ways like it does now.
Yeah.
The counselors from BMS and crisis care can come over to the detox or safe bedside or upstairs, the addiction side, to see somebody, and that'll still be able to be facilitated now, just a matter of walking across the alley. So, if somebody needs to sober up first, the detox, then be walked across the crisis stabilization, or if there's somebody in crisis, in detox, that they want to walk over from crisis stabilization, detox, somebody detox, they still can, much like the flow is currently.
Sure. I just, it came to me, and I think we are doing an amazing job, commissioners, as far as the one, everything being so close together and being able to transfer that care that fast and efficient, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
And this is another elevation of the west side of the building, that would be right off of that side parking lot between the, this is what the side that the house would be on. This would be the opposite side that would be alongside Third Street. So, going back to seeing this side of that, this is Third Street right along here, we are bringing, adding some parking here. We currently have a planned development submitted with the city for approval. We did the initial one, we, it appears that we aren't going to have any real significant issue going through here, but we are requesting reduced parking because the, we don't, the people utilizing the facility will not have vehicles, mainly serves staff. Any questions I can answer relative to the drawings or?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskinak.
Mike, that second level, is that just going to be dedicated for HVAC?
Uh, no, the second level is actually a clear story area to bring light into there. Earlier design, we had a mechanical penthouse that was included on the backside of that, the house and HVAC equipment and stuff. We eliminated that to help try and modify costs, to bring the cost down for the facility. So, now we're utilizing rooftop units.
So, this facility will be completely self-contained and not dependent on the other building for heating?
It could stand alone, we have connections between the two sides, and they will sell, they will share the emergency generator. Our intent relative to emergency power to the facility is during like a snow, a significant snow event or something that shuts down the city generally, we don't want to have first responders trying to relocate people during a significant event like that, so we always maintain that we can maintain heat in a building during a cold weather event where power's lost.
Thank you.
Commissioner Haddock.
So, we seem to outgrow buildings pretty quick here at Pennington County, so can we add a second level on this? Are you making it so you already know that this building could be either going up, I don't think it's going to go the other way? So, I think it'd be crazy if we didn't prepare for the future of it, because I don't think it's going to, our population's going up, plus I think our facility is going to be well-used.
Well, there are limitations to the amount of people, this, by state law, amount of people that this building can serve.
Okay.
So, sixteen is the maximum amount. Now, we could, if we acquire the home property, we could flip this floor plan and do another one right adjacent to it.
Right. Or add to it to put something else for, like a buildings and grounds building or something else beside it, where we can use the mechanics and stuff from it instead of start all over with a whole new building?
Uh, well, we could extend, potentially extend some of the systems, but for the most part, right now, the building is designed to serve, where we would save is along that corridor wall, but things like fire alarm systems, things like that, or water services potentially could be, costs could be reduced in those areas, but we've had just limited discussion because of the, that the program, the state law limits the number of people that can be utilizing the facility.
That makes sense, then.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lacroix.
I'd make a motion to authorize advertisement of the crisis stabilization project with bid opening scheduled for August 31st, 2021 at 2:00 PM.
Is there a second? Got a motion by Commissioner Lacroix, second by?
Second.
Commissioner Haddock, is there any members of the public that wishes to address this issue? Seeing none, back for more conversation by the commission if so. Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we're at C, study project.
So, as you're aware, the, we've been working with Venture Architects on a jail study to look at our infrastructure needs within the, in the jail annex. I have here from Venture Architects, Tom Paulette, that is going to do a presentation of the findings, and I'll stay up here to help him get through some of the graphics that we have.
Thank you, Mike. We've been working on this for quite a period of time, and we've been spending.
Tom, would you just identify yourself?
Sure. My name is Tom Paulette, I'm a principal with Venture Architects in Milwaukee.
Okay.
We've been working on this for quite some time, we've been coming, going through the building with our local engineering group, Skyline Engineering, has been involved with doing the plumbing, heating, electrical work on the project. We've spent time going above the ceilings, looking at ductwork, looking at wiring, we've gone through plumbing chases, we've gone through the hidden places in the building to see what the conditions are in the building. It was built in the late eighties, so it's been quite a substantial amount of time since any major renovation has been done to the infrastructure of the building, so this is kind of the time to take a look at that. We were told when we started this, you wanted to go thirty to forty years out without having to do any more major infrastructure work to this building, so that's kind of what the study was based on. A lot of the information I have here is written down in front of me, it's in the report, it's in the portion of the report that you received, and in the full report, which I believe Mike will get you a copy of later, will show you more of the items that are included in that. So, the first item we're looking at doing, and I've got a list here of twelve items that are more of the major costs involved with this, there are a lot of little projects that go with this, when you get into it and you start opening up walls, even when you start building it, you're going to find additional things that need to be replaced and taken care of. So, the budget that we have has a substantial contingency included in it, so that we don't have to come back to you in the future for more money to finish this project. On the exterior, we're looking at putting a new sanitary main out to St. Joseph Street to take care of the main jail building. On the plumbing end, we're looking at replacing all of the water lines in the building and all of the sanitary sewer lines in the building. The water lines were copper, and you have aggressive water here, it's eating the copper, and you're getting pinhole leaks all over the building on a regular basis, and the sanitary lines were cast iron, and the cast iron is starting to deteriorate after this amount of time, and it needs to be replaced with PVC piping. So, would replace the water with a plastic pipe as well, and that would, on both of those, you should have an unlimited life with limited amount of maintenance work to be done.
So, Tom, from the, from the St. Joe Street, are you oversizing? Is that what you're doing to support?
We're taking care of, right now, there's a bit of a concern of a dip in the pipe, and it's taken that out of the picture, so.
Right. So, you're just hooking to the main with a different pipe, which is what size?
That's correct. Yep.
What size do you put in?
Oversized, it wouldn't be oversized, it would be sized for the building.
Which would be what size for?
I'm guessing it'd be an eight inch or a ten.
And then you do the six inch inside the building, or what size pipe do you use?
Well, it'd be, again, you'd start at the beginning, it starts small pipe, and it goes to bigger pipe as it leaves the building. It increases in size as it gets more demand for the service.
Okay. So, the size is?
The engineers would size the pipe according to the need.
Okay, so you're, you don't know, okay, thank you.
Each pipe, each run would be sized differently. Each main would be sized in the building.
Depending on how much use would?
To take care of the need. We're also looking at replacing the stormwater sewer in the building. Again, the same thing, it was cast iron when it was built, and it's starting to have problems, there's starting to get cracks in the pipe and starting to get leaks in the pipe, so all that cast iron would be replaced with PVC piping again. And that, you start with a bigger pipe at the top of the building and take it down all the way through the building and take it out to the storm sewer in the street. The light fixtures in the building are conventional light fixtures, fluorescent and incandescent. We would replace all of those with LED fixtures, light emitting diodes. They have a much longer life, they will give you good light, and the energy savings alone will pay back in a very short period of time, probably less than five years, these fixtures would pay for themselves, just in the amount of energy that they use.
Just help bring some clarity relative to, the ceiling areas are one of the areas that, in order to upgrade infrastructure, have to be opened up, so those ceilings come down, it only makes sense to upgrade the lights when we rebuild the ceilings.
Yeah, it's just a better fixture all the way around. There's a lot of security wiring in the building. When Black Creek came in and took over for the previous security electronics vendor, they just abandoned and placed all of the existing wiring that's in there. There are places in the building where there's just lots of, lots of, lots of abandoned wire that, when maintenance has to go in and find a neck in the wire or find something that needs to be fixed in order to get a lock door correctly, they spend a lot of time trying to find the active line. So, it really needs to, we really need to take all that old wiring out and come back and put all new wiring in. This picture that Mike's got up here, this cable tray, as it's called, in there, you can see all the wire that are, that's in there, this, there should be ten percent of that wiring in that cable tray to run this portion of the building, so there's just a lot of wire in there that's just, has no value.
Basically, the blue wire, there should be about, the amount of blue network cables you see in there should be all that's running through that cable tray essentially to run that. Now, the challenge is, is that we got, we got these things, all this cable, all this wiring running through here in pairs. This picture's the best one I could find that shows an area of how, but literally, the wires are this deep in that tray as well, so you got a short in that wire, how do you find that to address that problem? One of the additional problems is that, when Honeywell, the building's had three different security control systems in its life so far. When Honeywell came in, at some point, some of these wires were just extended, so there, literally, there's almost times where we have wire nutted things together. Finding, trying to find a problem with, where a loose connection or something in that mass of wires is, is a real challenge. It's almost impossible at times to do that. We have some cells down right now because we can't get them, they don't, won't show secure in terms of the monitoring, so the cells can't be used, and literally, we've had guys working, trying to find this stuff for weeks, trying to find where the problem is, so.
The locks on the cell doors are what's called a 10-120 Southern Steel Lock, they are 120 volt locks. That technology of 120 volts went out probably about fifteen to twenty years ago. All new locks now are 24 volts, and they can be ran with the Black Creek system, instead of running line voltage there, they're just run off of the head end of the equipment. So, the issue here is to change that 120, 120 volt lock to a 24 volt lock, and then stop running them off the Black Creek system and not have to get all this additional power to the locks to make them run.
Oh, just a question, sorry, Chair.
No, go ahead.
So, on those systems, how long do the systems usually last? Like Honeywell's has been in, how long, and then Black, maybe Mike can answer that?
The honest truth is, as soon as it was installed, it was obsolete. That's just the way electronics are nowadays. You'd be lucky to get ten to fifteen years out of it, and then you won't be able to get parts. Everybody, I've been doing jails for thirty years, and that's the big trick for security electronics, is you just won't be able to get parts. You'll scavenge parts for another five or ten years, and then after that, it's done.
But what I will say in relative to the way the thing is being structured is that now, going into the future, we are going to be creating a comm room on every floor in a central location, so all the wiring will run back to this single location, and we can upgrade equipment right there at that location, and then you take one cable from that room down, one or two cables down to, down to the lower levels to the main hub area where, and we eliminate those mass piles of wire.
And that was, that was basically my question, some technology changes, you actually can change with the technology, meaning you have something more than that.
What we're doing is saving you a lot of money in the future with making the wiring accessible to any vendor.
There you go.
And you're going to buy head end equipment, you're going to buy new head end equipment because. because that's what you can't get parts for.
That's what I mean, is that, are we planning for the future in case in ten to fifteen years, we have to change that system, instead of going back and go, okay, we can't figure this out, we got fourteen thousand wires in one spot, so, so you answered my question. Thank you.
Uh, and then when we get into a, half a pod at a time, that's what we plan on constructing, when we get into half a pod at a time, we're gonna upgrade the finishes and put new ceilings in those spaces, because you have the opportunity now to do it, because you don't have inmates in the area, so it's a time to spend the money to get the finishes upgraded at the same time.
That, that is kind of the direction that I've provided, is that, uh, our goal is, um, it's, it's a significant deal to shut down a pod, um, or half a floor is what we've come to the conclusion of, that we will shut down a half a floor at a time. Uh, that's a big deal. We don't want to have to go back in in the near future and shut down pods again. So the goal is to take care of anything out in these pods. And I, maybe I should clarify, this would be half a, this would be half a floor, this actually shows multiple pods in it, but, um, uh, we'll shut down this whole side of a building, uh, 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 on this floor. Uh, so it's, it's this level, plus there's a, there's a whole nother stack of cells above on a mezzanine with a, with a walkway right around, along here above that. We'll shut down, uh, one side on a floor at a time, go through and upgrade all the stuff that's in that pod, so that hopefully, we don't have to go in and do any significant shutdown to do, uh, upgrades for another thirty years.
Now, the plumbing chaise that Mike, we have shown during the lower right-hand corner, that you see two toilet fixtures, uh, onto that, we're gonna rebuild that plumbing chaise that's there. Uh, currently, there's a very small access door into those chases, but maintenance has to get in to, to work on those, uh, plumbing fixtures, and to work on the, uh, the smoke detectors and the exhaust ducts that go through there. Uh, we need to get that all taken out of there and rebuild that with a, uh, a steel, uh, cell wall construction, two-inch cell wall construction, because we need the space to get everything in there. But with this, we would put in new plumbing fixtures, we would put in new exhaust ducts, so there'd be an individual exhaust to each individual cell, and there would be a smoke detector in each individual exhaust duct. So if an inmate were to start a fire in a cell, if he were to get a cigarette and try and smoke it in a cell, you would know exactly which cell that was, because that's where you would get the alarm from. So it's, uh, wait, as now, there's only one, uh, detector there for four cells, and there are cells on two different levels, so you're, you're not sure where that, that alarm is coming from.
So there's, maintenance access is, it was, it was a, uh, thing that we were trying to make sure that we, uh, if we're gonna upgrade systems, try to make it more maintenance-friendly. Literally, uh, to change smoke detectors at times, we gotta have our, we gotta have our skinniest guy that you gotta try and push through a small opening, climbing through pipes, to be able to go in and change a smoke detector head, uh, to get in there. Uh, one of the goals is to make access so that we can make, make fixes, uh, to problems, is a goal along with this.
Yeah, so as, as the, those detectors need to be cleaned on a regular basis. So we have access to the back from the chaise there, that they can go in and remove heads and put a different head in there, and then take twenty, thirty heads back down to the shop, clean them, and then go to another area and remove heads, bring them down to the shop, clean them. So they're swapping them out to be able to clean them, and it's much more effective and efficient for your maintenance to be able to take care of it that way. Uh, heat recovery, we're looking at putting a, a heat recovery system in. Currently, you don't have a heat recovery system, so all of the exhaust that goes out of this building, and there's a substantial amount of exhaust, because each cell is a toilet room, so each toilet room has exhaust, so you're, you're sending that air out into the environment when it's ten below, and it's heated air. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna recover that heat before we exhaust it. So that, again, that's a short-term payback for, for that to be taking place. Uh, and then there's several other issues as far as code goes, between when the building was built and today, so there's a substantial amount of upgrading, bring the building up to current code on the HVAC system.
Uh, one, one thing I will note relative to HVAC improvements is that, uh, uh, the, the new, uh, uh, way that, the, the chases are set up should provide better heating and cooling within each cell than we currently have. Right now, we can get, um, parts of the cell can, um, can be, it, it isn't always as easy to, to have a, a uniform temperature through a cell, uh, so we can, will, that will be improved as well.
Yes, and then the one issue in the, in the annex building that we're gonna be taking a look at is the vacuum system. We're gonna be replacing much of that piping on the vacuum system to get that, uh, to work properly. There's dips in the pipe, and there's areas where you're getting buildup of uric acid or urine acid in the pipe, there's a section cut through it. Uh, it's, it's just starting to fail, so the piping needs to be replaced to get that, the, the drain properly.
That is a, that is, um, from, uh, urine salts building up within the pipe, and you can see how it's plugged half of the pipe on, on the vacuum system.
Then there's some renovation projects that we've been looking at on the ground floor, uh, in the booking area. Wait for Mike to get the picture up. On the ground floor, uh, we're looking at redesigning, or we have redesigned, we're looking at doing, redoing the booking cover, or a bigger pre-booking area down to the lower left, adding more cells up towards the top of the sheet. And then probably the most key issue in, in the environment we're in today is, is adding more, uh, video arraignment, uh, video court facilities down on the lower right-hand side of the plan. Uh, much of that was taken up by the old kitchen that was in, in the area, or the old kitchen was actually up towards the top, but it's in that same general area. Uh, video court is getting to be more and more important, especially with the COVID disease, uh, out and about there, that everybody wants to do things via video, especially the judges and the courts, they don't want inmates coming to court and getting everybody sick, they wanna try and do more and more with video. So I think there's a real demand for that, that service to take place.
What, uh, something I'd like to point out is that, um, this is, uh, is work that was previously done and, and, and earlier work that we did, that culminated in the execution of the new kitchen and laundry area, uh, but we did lay out, uh, the design for how to do the floor before. This was not intended to be originally a part of, it was not part of the, the infrastructure study's scope, but we thought it was appropriate to bring it into the discussion in terms of, uh, that, that it can be a, it would be a good time to execute some of this work, and particularly as we work towards how we wanna fund this stuff. Uh, these are needs that aren't going away, where they have to be addressed at some point, we just want it on the table to talk about, when's the appropriate time to try and get some of this work done?
So the budget for the work, and, and again, there, th- those are the key points, the highlight points of, of the study. There is, there is a bunch of small stuff, additional stuff that will be done with the project, but the, the, the budget for the infrastructure project is twenty-one million, seven hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars. The budget for remodeling this floor, this ground floor, is five million, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars. The budget for remodeling the first floor is one million, eighty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars. And the first floor renovation is, uh, office space, public toilets. The work that's shown in, in the cell block there, that's included with the project, that's included with the infrastructure project, so that, uh, green and the blue, it would be the one million, eighty-two thousand dollars. And then security enhancements, those are some additional sliding door work and some, uh, additional work beyond the cell door locks, is seven hundred and eleven thousand, oh, forty-six. So the total, grand total, if we put everything together, is twenty-eight million, eight hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars. So a substantial amount of money, but it's, uh, it, it, it's the kind of project, eventually, and then some of this is gonna happen in the short term, some of these things are gonna start to fail, and you're gonna have to do emergency replacement of it, not just the project replacement of it.
Uh, one thing I would like to note relative to cost, uh, is we are factoring in the realities of, uh, of current times with, uh, challenges to, uh, supply chains and, um, and elevated costs. So we, we tried to account for that relative, and our, I believe our estimate was based on, uh, the beginning of next year, what, what predictions we thought, uh, what conditions, the state of, um, construction would be, uh, at the beginning of next year.
That's correct.
So is that built into your contingency? Is that how you did that, or?
Uh, the, the, generally, the costs, uh, uh, across the board, and, correct me if I'm wrong, are elevated based on the realities of today. And then, but we do have a sizable contingency as part of this, because as Tom pointed out, when you go in and remodel something, there will be things that, uh, um, uh, you find. And as we go through design, there's a, there's contingencies based on, um, as we work through design, we'll understand, uh, the project better, um, and so we can reduce that contingency ultimately. Traditionally, what I have done is that when we, uh, after we bid, we carry a five percent contingency on, on the project. Um, so there's a sizable contingency associated with this right now, just because there's a lot of unknowns yet.
Yeah, there's two, there's a design contingency and a construction contingency, they're two separate components. Design being pre-bidding, construction being post-bidding.
Okay. Commissioner Lassiter, do you have something? Okay.
Mr. Sheriff, I mean.
Yes.
Yeah, Kevin Tompkins, County Sheriff again. First, I want to thank Mike and his crew, and then Tom and his company for helping put all this together. Uh, Tom and his crew did the jail laundry kitchen with us, and they've been excellent to work with, and we have high confidence in their, their work, so, uh, they're very well versed on jail operations. You know, the, one question we get asked oftentimes with this is, are you increasing your bed capacity? And minimal, we might pick up about a dozen beds down in booking, but we aren't increasing, you know, the cell blocks or any of that in terms of, uh, additional bed space. And, you know, the, the juncture we add is, either we, you know, put the money into renovating this and get another thirty years of life out of it, because structurally, you know, the building is very solid, Mike calls it a tank, it's very well-built, and it's just the guts of it need redone, it's just worn out. And now their, only other alternative is, we go build a, a third tower in the parking lot, which may be a reality someday for Pennington County anyway, it depends on growth in the county and everything else, but, uh, and it's a well-thought-out, well-vetted project, and I know money's, uh, there's just a reality to it, but, um, we appreciate consideration on it, and as we look for a plan and a path to move forward, so thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Mr. Chair.
I think Commissioner Ross can act. Uh, for an example, that, uh, ground floor remodeling, five million, two fifty-seven, nine thirty-eight, and that report, is there a breakdown that shows how we got that number?
I don't believe there is, but we can get you a breakdown.
I was just curious.
Yeah, I don't believe within the report there is, there is a, we do have a, a, a cost estimate that we did, and there's portion.
It doesn't, it won't get into all the details of-
Yeah, it doesn't get into how cutting up the floor for the plumbing and doing the plumbing, heating, electrical work, it's not broken down that way, but we can get you there.
Okay, no, that's fine, I just wondered, uh, without having the report, I just wondered if that, there was more detailed information in that report that showed how we got to these particular estimates.
Yeah, Mike's got it up there, the detail it's broken down to.
I, I offer my apologies in regard to, my intent was to get that sent out. Uh, we were, we were tweaking, uh, uh, some of the information as of last week, uh, I was out of town, I wasn't able to get it sent out to the commissioners prior to this, so, just the executive summary.
Well, I appreciate the, uh, the information. I think, you know, our goal is to, uh, you know, my, uh, my history has been seeing jails being obsolete after thirty, thirty-five years, and, uh, replaced with, with new, uh, buildings. And I think this is by far the most economical thing for us to do with a structure that's sound, uh, infrastructure that needs to be updated, uh, to extend the life of this for at least another thirty years and get sixty-plus years out of the use of that facility. So, uh, in my mind, this is the right way to go.
Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I, I agree with Mr. Drew, as, you know, I, I remember when jail was built, I was working over at Detox one time, once it was built, having the laundry facility and the new cooking and all that for the community, I, cause chair hold I am. But I want to thank you for bringing out that contingency part and, and, and looking forward, and while you're taking things apart to redoing them, I mean, that's so important to have that foresight to get these things done, I mean, replacing the lights and the ceilings while you're up there, and it makes absolute sense, the wiring, pulling out all that excess wiring, it's creating havoc for our employees that have to do their work, and even contractors coming in and doing it, I, I think that's gonna do the efficiency, so I really appreciate that. And I'm glad you brought up about the, the, the contingency, 'cause I only seen one line till you said the two, 'cause I, I had it figured out, you only, you only had one million five in there for a contingency, well, actually about two point nine.
Yeah.
For both design and, for any problems that you're gonna run into, you know, but looking at that duct system and, and planning that out for the, the maintenance part of it, I think that's key, and I think you guys did an excellent job. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Um, I, I'm not seeking any action at this time, uh, I believe that there's some, uh, developing thinking around how we should, uh, potentially fund things going forward, and I think so, I, I think there's maybe kind of some strategic thoughts on that in the process, and I thought we would probably, we'll come back and ask or request based on, as that develops a little bit further.
Okay, thank you. Tom, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, thanks.
Yep.
Item thirteen. Ted, you're up.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ted Rufflett, Jr., Deputy Director of Pennington County 911. On this particular item, I'm acting as the project manager. We, we built a couple other radio towers back in twenty-twelve, and so, uh, we have some more here to do, and the bid, uh, the bid document is ready to go, so I'm here today asking for your authority to, to open up the bids. As just a real quick summary, you may recall, the South Dakota Legislature appropriated three point two million dollars for this project, which will cover the vast majority of it. There may be a, a small portion that will have to come back to the county to fund, but we won't really know that until we get the bids in. So we are ready to go out to bid. We'd like to open the bids and then have them due by August twelfth, and do our bid opening on, at three fifteen that day. And, uh, we have a site walkthrough planned with prospective bidders, and I've already got prospective bidders contacting me. And, uh, I believe, you know, I'll stand for questions if you have any questions on this project, I think you're all familiar with it, we've actually been paying some bills already related to this project.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross can act.
I make a motion to authorize advertisement of the Pennington County Radio Towers project with a bid opening scheduled for August twelfth, two thousand twenty-one, three fifteen P.M.
Second. I got a motion by Commissioner Ross Connect, and a second by Commissioner Lassiter. Uh, any, any people from the public wishing to address this? Any further discussion by the commission? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Item fourteen, item from Highway Department. Joe.
Good morning, Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Superintendent. Uh, first up in front of you is a, for the South Surrachford Road Reconstruction. Uh, the state, uh, has closed out the original project and has now assigned this a new project number, so now we need to have another, uh, agreed work order signed and, and an agreement, uh, signed with the state, so we can continue forward with the design and anything else that might be needed.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hancock, second by Commissioner Lassiter. Uh, any public comments? Seeing none, further discussion by the commission? Being done, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Next up is, uh, Pine Grove Speed Limit, uh, this is already in front of you, I believe, a couple meetings ago. Um, this is just simply the resolution to allow, uh, the sheriff to enforce the speed limit on Pine Grove, or within Pine Grove Road District.
Move approval of the resolution.
Second.
Motion, uh, by Commissioner Hancock, second by Commissioner Ross Connect, uh, any public comments? Any public comment? Any further commission comment? Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C.
Next up is another resolution for a speed limit within a road district on 229th Street. Again, this is simply the resolution. You approved this, I believe, the last meeting, and asked us to bring back the resolution.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Lassiter, second by Commissioner Hancock. Any public comment? Commission discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item D.
Item D was, is a big grant preliminary engineering application. These are due beginning of August here. So this resolution will allow us to apply for the preliminary engineering grant for the design of our Sherman Street Bridge. We've already started the hydraulics and the survey portion of the Sherman Street Bridge. We're going to move forward with the design, whether we get this grant or not. This is just the, an opportunity for Pennington County not to, or to obtain some funding from the state for the engineering on this project, so.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair. Move to approve Resolution 2021-07-20-3, authorizing Pennington County to submit Bridge Improvement Grant to their engineering application.
Motion by Commissioner LaCroy, second by Commissioner Lassiter. Public comment? Commission discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 15. Dust abatement policy.
You want me to take the lead, or would you like Mr. Rosskinack?
Commissioner Rosskinack, your choice.
Okay. Go ahead, Joe.
Okay. So I just read through your request to do, I believe, test strips up to approximately $31,040, I think?
$680.
$680, is that what it was? I don't have it. It's down quite a ways in my notes. I'll just go through some, some numbers here for you guys, food for thought. Most of this was in your packet. To do one mile of road with mag chloride at a 24-foot roadway width, there's 740 gallons of mag chloride, if you shoot that at a half gallon per square yard. This equates to approximately $119 perennial foot on a 24-foot roadway, so that's strictly the material cost of the mag chloride. So then, for our Pennington County, or our 2021 bids for mag chloride, comes up to about $62, $65, and $0.60 for the 2020 bid for a mile. That's just for the mag chloride, there's not any labor or anything included in that price. So the four miles that Commissioner Rosskinack, Commissioner Rosskinack, I'm assuming you went four miles with the, what you calculated there, is that correct?
I calculated that $31,680 by using 5,280 times six times 150.
Okay.
$1.50 a front foot.
So three miles, isn't it?
I calculated it out to four. If you take the $31,680 divided by $1.50, it's actually four miles. Okay.
Anyhow, my goal was to try to get six miles.
Six miles, okay. Well, I assumed four miles, so it was a little, the math was off there a little bit, so. The cost to the county for just that material will be $25,000 for the material only. We did Idlewice Mountain here last week and also Bogus Gym. We calculated that out for the, the total cost all in is about $2.50 a foot. So the cost for four miles would be about $52,800. If you want to do the six miles, the cost to the county.
Mr. Chair, can I ask Joe something? Where's Bogus Gym in Idlewice? What district is that in?
District one. So if you wanted to do six miles, that would bring the total to approximately $79,200.
And can I ask one more question?
For material only, right?
That would be all in. That would be county cost, everything.
Okay.
Chairman.
Commissioner Hancock.
So who paid for Idlewice, Bogus Gym?
So the policy was used. So the landowners paid the $1.50 a foot, and then we applied, we prepped the road and applied it. So that's the total cost.
And the roads we're talking about today are in District one as well?
I believe that's what Commissioner Rosskinack is after.
Okay. Thank you.
I might just add that Bogus Gym in Idlewice, I don't know how long of a stretch. My concern isn't doing the whole six, six miles, I think that was kind of a cap. My concern is the areas that are high density along either one, any county road where you got 15 to 20 homes. To me, that's, it's not a convenience. It's a matter of safety and quality of life from the articles that I've read. So what I'd like to do is, at least for the county, eventually, you know, roads will be paved, but in the interim, as we increase with traffic, and my studies show that anything over 150 a day warrants some type of a treatment. So if I can, what I'm, my goal is to get those six hotspots in my district, at least for the time being, and get some mag water on there. And I don't think it should be the landowner's expense, because it's our duty as a county to provide people with a safe habitat.
So that, the study that you're referring to was done in 2004, and I actually have some ADTs going back 20 years on Rochford, Rochford Road South, I would believe, West Rochford, or I think it's continuation of Rochford, that we call it Black Fox, Mystic, those hotspots that you're referring to, the ADT fluctuates between that 150 and 280 T going back 20 years. We did just do counts on Idlewice, Rochford, South Rochford, and Mystic over Memorial Day weekend and over Independence Day weekend, and the counts were a little higher than what our average counts have been on an average summer week, but they still fluctuate around that 150 to 280 T.
So on the Fourth of July, the Mystic Road from Deerfield to Castle Creek was 240. When we got up to that Idleways, we were over 400. And the numbers that I'm looking at, they're all, pretty much all over 200, 250.
On a, on a holiday weekend, that is correct. So the traffic's going to be a bit more, one can assume. The normal counts that we've done during the summer fluctuate between 150 and 280 T. We did do a count, and granted, we only did it on Mystic, because we only had one counter. In the dead of winter in January, I believe the count was like 62 cars a day on Mystic Road. So that takes out all your tourism traffic, all your, this should be strictly local traffic at that point. Idlewice Mountain, for your information, Commissioner Rosskinack, the stretch was 2,500 feet. 2,200 of that was Clear Creek, Clear Creek Road District, doing it on Idlewice where their road district abuts that, so there's that housing development there. And the other 300 feet was at the bottom near Bear Gulch where the end of our county line is, the end of our county maintenance. The requests for mag water, per our policy, have been coming in, you know, one or two a week. I think we're up to about seven or eight now for 2020. I attached a report to your packet that had mag water applications going back, I believe 2002 was the earliest one that we had, and then the request after 2008, and they, straightforward, I guess, there's also a graph in there that follows the drought and wet cycles, basically, from the National Weather Service. And from our National Weather Service friends, in October, we are going into a drought cycle. So if this policy's changed, it has a, you know, has potential to cost county highway a lot of dollars if the policy's changed. And then, Ron, I believe you asked for test strips to see if there is any sort of maintenance in your request. We did that in 2016, per Commissioner Farabee's request, and it was found that there are no savings to gravel maintenance costs.
Commissioner, or Chairman?
Commissioner Hancock.
Just a question. So if you spend $80,000 this year, you have to do it for three years. You can't just do it once, right?
It's an application that needs to be done every year. Right. You can't just do it once every three years. For it to be successful and have the effect that is, that a person's after, it needs to be done every year.
But once you start it, you have to keep going.
You don't have to keep going. You can stop doing it, but you're not going to get that, that, that's the precedent going into the next year.
So you basically wasted the money if you don't keep it up? It'll just make it good for the summer?
That's correct. And it might not even, you know, I'm not an expert on mag chloride. I do have Cliff Ryer in the audience. I don't know if he's an expert, but he used to work for the DOT for years as a material specialist, or I don't...
Kind of all phases of road work.
All phases of road work. He worked for the DOT for a lot of years. You know, so from my understanding, mag chloride draws the moisture out of the air, so if we have a dry year, mag chloride's not going to work as well as it would on, say, a wetter year.
Okay.
I guess, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Can I ask Cliff a question?
Cliff?
So Cliff, if we apply it this year, and it, Joe just said if it's a dry year, it's not really going to work as good. Do we have to keep applying it for it to basically work, or how is it applied? I mean, like, you put one set in the beginning of summer, and then it lasts till what?
Typically, we can get one-year service out of an application, is what we've seen in the past. The, even on, you know, when, when the weather is dry, you get a humid day like today, you'll see that mag chloride out there, you'll see that surface start to turn color. It's starting, like it's getting wet. It'll absorb moisture even on a day like today, with the humidity being high. But, you know, it is weather-dependent a little bit. It works better when it's wet, no doubt about it. It'll, it'll, it'll take a while. If you get a long, dry stretch, it takes a while for it to dry out, and then you can, you can see your material start to come loose, but...
So if we started it this year, basically, we'd have to keep applying it every year for it to keep working?
Yeah, but you don't have to apply as much in your subsequent years. You do, do a heavy application your first year, somewhere in the neighborhood of half a gallon per square yard, and you should, we recommend, what we've seen work best is incorporate that into the, into the top couple inches of surfacing, rather than just spray it on top. We get, you get longer lasting if you incorporate it into the top section. And then maybe the next year, maybe you don't, you can just scuff up maybe a little bit, inch of the surface, and then, and put in a reduced amount per square yard, like maybe three tenths, or you can kind of experiment a little bit, how much would work out there for you, and you can get by with less in doing that. And then, I do not recommend, we do not recommend, we have not found much success. We've found less success if you just go out and spray the top of the roadway surface and walk away. Needs to be incorporated.
So Joe, if you're going to do the mag water, and if we decide to do the mag water, you've included that in on the cost of the $80,000, basically, is to redo the top surface and then apply it?
That includes any preparation work that goes into it, correct?
And could you just put it in pieces and parts, or do you have to do the whole road and then put it in the parts that you want?
You don't have to do the whole road. It just gets a little more difficult for our operators to maintain, you know, because you don't want to maintain over the mag chloride if it's not sufficiently saturated. Otherwise, you're going to lose that, the binding effect of the mag chloride, so it'll, ultimately, it'll take our blade operators a little longer if it's shorter stretches. You can talk to any blade operator out there, they'd rather have miles, open miles, rather than, than short stretches, because it's, it's a lot easier to maintain and you get a lot more done.
Mr. Chair.
Hold on, just, sorry, Ron. So when you do the, have you done the short stretches before, Joe, or does somebody want pretty much, you know?
Generally speaking, we do between that 300 and 500, you know, in front of a home, you know, a property. Generally, people live on a gravel road, they've got a fairly large lot, so they want to do in front of their home. I don't know what the average is, but generally speaking, what I've seen come in is around that 300 to 500 feet, foot request. Even out in Commissioner Lassiter's district, that's about what we get.
Can I ask Commissioner Rosskinack, is that okay if I ask you a question?
Yes.
Why did you pick, like, some of your people are paying for their mag water, and then these people wouldn't be paying for the mag water. Why did you pick this six miles and not other people's areas?
So getting on Rapid Map, I can, I can, I know that district like the back of my hand. I can identify areas that I'm saying we're in a cluster. So what somebody's done is they've taken a home site entry survey and they subdivide it. And all these homes are in a cluster, and they're, they front a gravel road. And the ones that I've identified that I feel are ones that I'd like to see taken care of sooner than later are the ones that are in clusters. So you're not, if you do 1,000 feet or 500 feet, you're not just going to benefit that one person that might want it in front of their house, you're going to benefit 20 people. And as I said, the reason, I really do feel that with the quality of gravel that we got, we, we know that our gravel doesn't have sufficient binder, the stuff that we're getting that we're putting on county roads. If it doesn't have good binder, it's just, it's poor gravel. And I've heard that to make that gravel decent, you'd have to put clay in it, and we can't get the clay. So, you know, my idea is to use mag water, because I, mag water will definitely, to me, the stuff that I've read, the mag water will enhance the life of those roads.
Well, I would disagree on the quality of gravel. I was just actually talking to Paul Larson, you know, on, on South Rochford Road, and the detriment to South Rochford Road is the project, right? Because it's been delayed gravel, because we don't want to spend the money to gravel it over the last 20 years that that project's been in the works. But we just crushed that benchmark pit, and we got an average five, Sean? PI?
Um, Joe, I...
6.3 was the, the PI content was the plasticity index, which indicates the, the amount of clay that's in your gravel surface was about 6.3. So, well, we don't have great gravel, it still meets our specification, and it still has some clay in it. Now, I'll point out, maybe Cliff can elaborate, that we've got, Andrew from LTAP pointed out some, some things that good surface gravel is a must. You know, you must have some PI in your gravel for mag chloride to be successful. So putting it on a gravel road that doesn't have any PI doesn't do any good. I mean, it'll do some good, but it's not going to be as successful as if you go spray it on a, a road that's got a good PI content like our benchmark gravel.
Yeah, that's what we have found. You need a certain amount of PI or clay material, binder material. Binder material is, is best to have clay. Sometimes the, when we make a stockpile, a contractor will want to leave topsoil stripping on the pit to make that binder. It's, it's not very good practice to do that. It never gets solid, it just stays, stays mushy, so to speak. So if you use clay, yeah, then you're, and somewhere around that spec, what is it, five to 12 on the PI?
Forty twelve.
Forty twelve on the PI?
Yep.
Yeah, and so if, you know, the, the more and more PI you get in it, you may get some complaints about the road being slippery when it's wet. But usually, cure time will, will resolve that issue. But yes, in order for the mag chloride to react and work well and last longer, you do, you do need some binder, clay binder in that material. The cleaner it is, the shorter your life is going to be for that mag chloride.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Rosskinack.
So my intentions were, were to spend up to $31,680 up to, not necessarily that much, and focus on the six areas that I feel warrant mag water. And not just for convenience, but for public safety and quality of life. And then, moving on, we've got a mag, or dust abatement policy that dates back to 2008. And we formed a road committee, but I think we're going to rename that committee, but I think that committee, I would like to see that committee work together and look at that mag water policy, and look at what has changed in our environment from 2008 to 2021. And I think we can all agree that the ATVs and OHVs are definitely getting to be something that we have to address in the future. So I'm not saying spend $31,680 for the next three years, I'm saying, within that parameter, that we look at those six sites that I feel warrant some mag water and, and take some action. I think there might be some... I think there might be some folks in the audience that might want to speak on behalf of this that actually live out there in those conditions.
Sure. Commissioner Lassiter?
Yes, sir. Well, actually, probably should let the, the citizens speak first because I have a couple of questions. So I kind of want to hear what they have to say. It might tack into what I'm going to ask.
Okay. So ask anybody from the public that wants to speak on this. Come on forward. Just please identify yourself.
Rod Alexandra. It'll have a place up on Gillette Prairie where we have about one mile of, of road goes up and past the four residences. And my son Derek has been putting mag water, having it put on from commercial person for the last 20 years. And when I hear the words, and I've heard it from every side of the realm of that it doesn't help the roads, I don't recall ever in the last 10 years seeing any gravel ever put on that corner. And it's right on the corner. Derek has put that mag water on there for at least 20 years. And that road definitely stays better than any of our other roads. And on that curve right there, it's going to be hard pressed to tell me that it doesn't do better for maintenance and conditions of the road down the road. I think that any money you spend on mag water will, it's got to be measured against what is going to have to be done in maintenance in the future. And we are paying a dollar, a my, a dollarous of running foot for putting mag water on. I put a half a mile on it this year and to try to keep the dust down because we're a couple of blocks off of the road with our ranch house and the dirt still comes down. But, and you can see the four wheelers, when they come by, they're glad to see, come by our places because they're almost can take their mask off when they're running in a bunch of them. And, and it is, they're a nuisance and so is the dirt. That's what I have to say. But I, I don't know what, have you ever seen where you put gravel on that road in front of Derek?
That's what I'm looking right now is to see when the last time I was gravelled. I'm not sure exactly.
One other thing is I don't come down very often that I want to bring up. And where you were talking earlier about speed limit signs. Right there past that curve, you come around the curve and you've got now new aero signs by the dozens on the road. And in here is an aero sign in sight with a 50 mile an hour speed limit sign on the road. And at the 30 mile an hour curve coming up in front of you, all of it can be seen from one location. And honestly, I think that speed does also affect the roads. And I think that, you know, we can hardly go 50 mile an hour on, on Highway 16. And, and here we're going 50 mile an hour speed limit posted on the county roads. I think some of that should be looked at.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Come on up.
Did you see?
Yeah, the last time Gillette Prairie, just for you guys' information, was gravelled. The information I have in front of me here is 2016.
2016?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, on that particular curve, I don't know if it was avoided or not as it circled around Derek's house because that road stays absolutely in a, in a better, in a better condition. I know that if the wrong maintenance person were to come up and Derek would be home and they're out there and going to start grading up the, the mag dirt, he's going to be out talking to them to not do it because it does destroy it. So the years in use definitely in my eyes does help. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Alexander.
Good morning.
Hi, I'm Reg Pitts and I live on Horse Creek Road. And we've had a real problem with dust. When we first moved up there in the early 70s, it was a quarter mile of county road and then a little forest service trail going in and no houses behind us. We now have an area built up that's totally off grid, but we have the off-road vehicles. And the dust is horrendous. When we moved up there, Milo Steele still lived there and, and I don't know whether he had any kind of a poll or not, but the county mag watered the road every year because we had health problems up there. We still have the health problems. I'm not sure when it was that the county decided they shouldn't, for safety, do the mag water. But was that 2008?
That is when the policy was passed, correct?
Okay, I think that really needed to be looked at within the first five years and it wasn't. We have 12, 15 UTVs go by at a time. And to make it worse, now they just re-gravelled our county road, our little short section, and increased the speed limit. I've talked to the guys on the, on the county highway and they keep saying, well, no, it was always 25, but it wasn't. There was a 20, 20 mile an hour sign, which we wish were 15 or something, but that's getting unrealistic. But I think that the county should take care of for health reasons, like Ron, Commissioner Roskinett has been saying. It used to be done. We're, we're paying a lot of taxes. Maybe the forest service is part of this also because they're making a lot of money from those tags for off-roaders. I don't know how that, how, I don't know how that works, but.
It don't.
It doesn't. But anyway, I'm glad that they're going to do one section up there, but there need to be a lot of sections of residential road looked at for mag water by the county. Now, the county road where it goes through Horse Creek is, the road goes through my property. It goes through Henderson property. It goes through Strombeck property. We're all paying taxes and we're all getting a lot of dust. We paid to have mag water put down a number of years ago when they were doing logging. And it helped with all the logging trucks going in and out of there. But that was kind of before we got so inundated the last couple of years with the UTVs. We paid for the mag water ourselves. And about eight weeks later, they came, the county came in and, and graded the road. So that was a big help. We were right back to the dust. So anyway, anything we can do about health problems, and we have them up on that road. And, and areas that need mag water because of dust should be done by the county.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Pitts?
Thank you, Mr. Pitts.
Thank you, Reg.
Got another gentleman coming forward. Kitty, I see you're on the, on the phone. I'll call on you next after this next gentleman.
Hello, I'm Paul Larson. I live on South Rochford Road. I have a construction company that works out of Deadwood and I sing 50 shows a night, or 50 shows a year at Palmer Galls. So I get to spend a little time on South Rochford Road going north and south. And I've been there for 20 years. And this year, as in the last few, are the worst years for dust that we've ever had. And of course, since Heine, there hasn't been any good, what I'd call good maintenance on that road simply because we've been talking about this blacktop for a long time. And so he actually admitted at one meeting that he was kind of fudging some monies because he knew that was going to be blacktopped and whatever. And Joe and myself talked out in the hallway because I'm to the point now where I'm pretty desperate to do something to slow down the traffic, to slow down the dust so that maybe on a Sunday morning, I could sit and have a cup of coffee without having to go inside. And yes, I moved out there, but when I moved out there 20 years ago, I don't even think people knew there was four wheelers. But now, I was looking at Joe's numbers and I don't agree with them at all because I know I could sit out there any morning and count 70 to 110 vehicles, either pickups with wheelers on them, you know, coming out. And they do not care if there's a 30 mile an hour turn sign or if it's 25. They're going to go 50, 55. And that's just kind of how it is. It's very irritating that over all these years, absolutely nothing has been done for dust control. And so it's up to you guys to give Joe the right gravel, the right money, the whatever it takes to do that. And I was hoping that you could do that today or, you know, in the near future.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Larson?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskinett.
Paul, I think it'd be safe to assume that you're speaking for a lot of neighbors that can't make it.
I called most of them and they all had prior commitments because they didn't know about this. Even Ronnie, you know, Conrad, who's just moved out there, but he's only been there for a few months and he's already up to his neck in frustration with dust and thinks so.
And the reason Paul's here because he was just one of three that called me last week and complained. And I, and I, a lot of this, I just forwarded on to our office manager and they said, let's put it on the agenda because I think it needs to be on the agenda.
Right.
And, you know, when we leave today, I hope we have some kind of a result because, and the other folks that I've talked to, it isn't because they're getting their car dirty. It's because they can't breathe.
You can't breathe, yeah.
Because they can't go outside.
Like I said, we've been talking about this. I've lived there for 20 years and I'm pretty sure we've been talking about, for about 14, 15 years. And absolutely nothing gets done. So I'm hoping that we can.
And we're not even.
Move forward on something.
Talking about livestock.
Right. You know, Leonard Reynolds, when he lived there, we doctored his cows every, every week because the dust on the road and the cows eat the grass, dusty grass, and they got sick. So now it's just people. There's not many more cows out there. There is livestock, mine horses and things that, you know, were covered in. You could pat them on the back and the dust would just roll off of them. So.
Thanks for hearing me.
Thanks for coming in, Paul.
Kitty, please identify yourself and you're free to address the commission.
Can you hear me all right?
We can.
Okay, I think Reg pretty well spoke for me.
Okay, identify yourself, Kitty. All I have, all I have is your first name, I think.
Kitty Pitts is my name. I'm Reg's husband. I think Reg pretty well spoke for me. But Horse Creek Road has gotten so much four by four traffic, dirt bikes also, that it's become almost impossible to enjoy walking on the road or sitting in the yard because of the dust. It just chases you right back in the house.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any questions of Kitty?
No.
Are there others in the audience that wish to address this issue?
Mr. Chairman.
So you can go to Commissioner Lassiter.
So it sounds to me, and I've received a lot of complaints and I've seen some on the web forum. I've had phone calls about this and everything that I'm hearing is, it seems to me, and y'all can tell me if I'm wrong, but it appears that it's these ATVs, the four wheelers that are, that are coming up there and riding on the, in the forest service grounds. And that's kind of what I'm hearing as the, as the problem. From the, from the county commission side, when we have a problem with any other industry, we look at the industry to fix that problem. So for example, mining, if they're bringing dirt out to the road, the road, we ask them to do dust abatement and things of that nature. It's up to that industry to, to kind of manage the pollution, the nuisance, or whatever it is that they're causing. So I'm kind of thinking here that we may have to do some more digging on this and figure out how we can get the industry itself that's, that's doing this to pay for it rather than the taxpayers. Because if this is, if this is tourist stuff that's coming in, if it's other businesses from out of town, which they are, because I actually was down in the hills all week last week. And I was watching these ATVs driving down there because there's people that were calling me about it. So I was down there looking at what's going on. Some of these ATVs are riding around with plate numbers that aren't even South Dakota plates. They're like number 12 or 15 or something and you can tell it's from a company. So it tells me that they're not even plated through here. So is there a process? Can we do something, Joe? And I'm asking you because you're kind of, you're the highway guy, but, and, and I know that we've kind of talked about it initially that there seems to be a no to this answer. But maybe we need to do some digging to figure out where, where it stands. If they're giving licenses for these ATVs to go onto these roads, what can we do to say, hey, look, you, your industry is causing the nuisance in these communities. We need to figure out how to, if we're going to apply mag water, maybe those license fees start paying for some of that appropriation. Because I have no problem with the industry itself fixing the problem, since that's the industry that's causing the problem. Since I don't think the, the numbers that you're showing is that it's the residents that's causing the problem. Those numbers are so low, I don't think that's the issue. That was a lot, but.
I'll answer the, the plate question, right? If it's registered here in Pennington County, we do get a portion of that license plates fee. I don't know what that portion is. Janet or Cindy might be able to answer that question. But we do get a portion of that. It's the, it's the other ones that are licensed, you know, they go get the permit from the forest service. And from my understanding, with that forest service permit, much like county road and bridge funds, that trail permit must be spent to maintain their trails, much like road and bridge funds must be spent to maintain county highway, or county highways, road and bridge. So I, I don't know exactly how you'd go about getting the industry to pay for it. I'm not sure. I, I couldn't answer that question right now. It'd take some brainstorming, you know, I don't know if, if the county would be able to impose some sort of permit that's needed. You know, maybe just for the rental places or something like that, that the rental places, you know, if that's a, if that's a mechanism that the county has to say, okay, rental places, you guys are renting these ATVs and you're going to pay X dollars, you know, and that's just spitballing right now. I don't know.
And this was just a, yeah, I get you because that's what I'm thinking too.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskinett.
This spring, I attended a two-day symposium with 100 other folks sponsored by the US Forest Service. I can, and, and after that two days, there was recommendations, where do we move forward relative? I spoke in behalf of the county and the, and the, and what they were doing to the roads. Well, the forest service made it very clear, they're not going to, they have no mechanism that they can help the county. But subsequent to that symposium, they created two groups, the action group and the advisory group. Guess what they're made out of? They're all, they're made up of government employees and the folks that own the rentals and own the distributorships. That's a good idea, but you're going to, I think we need something today, some action today. And then we, we can form a group and we can try to figure out where we want to go in the future, long-term. But I would like to, I would like to, for the county, for me and Joe, to identify six areas and, and figure out what we're going to need to do. And I'd like to get it done this year.
Chairman.
Commissioner Adcock.
I'm listening to what people say, but they said give Joe the right tools to do his job. And the right tool was the dust policy and has been the dust policy. It's made up for a reason. And I truly believe it works because obviously it's been working in Ron's district and, and because mostly, let's be up straight, Ron and Travis's district use the mag water. So the ranchers and farmers that have ag businesses, that are local residents that pay taxes, they actually have businesses on those roads. They don't have just ATVs. And we do not go and say, we're going to pay for your mag water because you have a lot of use, because you have a business on it. So to be up straight, you, you got to be fair across the board. You can't just pick six areas that you believe are high-traffic areas. Businesses are very important to us as well, not just ATV traffic areas. I'll keep saying, give Joe the right tools. We have the right tool. You have to follow the policy. And if you don't like the policy and you, and you want dust, then you're going to have dust. You're going to have to pay if you don't want the dust. You moved in the county where there's gravel roads, not paved roads right now. And we have a policy that actually works because one of the landowners says that the mag water is working really well in his area, but he has to keep putting it on. So you just putting, spending 80,000 today to put it in spec areas that we decide, I think is pretty unfair to the people that paid for it and that are paying for it now and then saying, okay, we're not going to pay for yours, but we picked six other areas that we think are more important. I think your taxpayers are going to be pretty mad. So that's, that's my opinion again. You said give the right. the right tools. We have the tool. Use the policy. We keep bringing this mag water stuff over and over again, and things might've changed, as you say, but again, we have a policy. If you don't like the dust, fix it. In the city, we have to do our sidewalks ourselves. We have to do certain things ourselves if we want it to be changed, so our driveways are different, so, or different. We have to pay for them ourselves as well. So if we don't like something, we have to pay for it. We don't get the taxpayers to say, I would like a, I'd like you to put a sidewalk in front because, you know, there's a lot of traffic here. So I'll just say, I understand health problems and different things, but again, you moved in the county on a dust road. If you don't like the dust, follow the policy. Um, based on taxpayer dollars, we are doing a lot of roads in that district. And so we said they're doing absolutely nothing. I think our highway department, um, does really well, and I think this policy has worked. It obviously hasn't been used that much. Um, bottom line is if, if it's such a big problem, then how come a lot of people haven't used the mag water themselves? Because just the cost? So I don't think so. I think a lot of the ranchers and farmers and, and, and different people as well would be using it if it, if it was such a problem with our bad roads and, and dust.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross can connect.
Couple things, uh, number one is that when we, eventually South Rochford Road will get paved, who's gonna pay for that? Just the taxpayers on South Rochford Road? No, the general public. Why is it getting paved? Well, one, one reason, because as the, uh, traffic density on these roads increase, so does the surface conditions. And so South Rochford Road's gonna get paved, but it ain't gonna be just the folks on South Rochford Road. It's gonna be all the taxpayers. So why, uh, maybe I shouldn't just identify six. Maybe I should just say, let's just mag water all of Mystic Road, mag water all of South Rochford Road, and then, and, uh, just call it a day.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner LaCroy.
I appreciate the, the strong discussions, cause I, you know, I've, I've had my mind made up and changed about three or four different times on this thing. I mean, just to be truthful, um, I mean, Deb's got some good points, Ron's got some good points. Um, me taking the time since I bought property out in the hills, being out there every weekend and being able to see what's happening, and, and firsthand actually gives me a feeling of, of what you're going through by seeing it. I, you know, it, it just does. I mean, when I drive by a prop, uh, some ATVs, driving on the gravel road and, and I'm on the, on the road and it's just blindside me, I can imagine what you folks are going through. Now, as a commissioner, my responsibility is to be equal to everybody. Treat everybody equally the same. If, you know, we've got properties out there that are, people that are actually paying for the service and volunteering it like that, I'm on for that. Um, where do we get from identifying which ones are the spear and trying to, to help litigate it? The thing that, the reason why we're here is to either choose a different path or follow policy. If there's an exception, we need to find it in order to do it. I don't know if I'm there yet, but I can tell you this much. Out there in the community, I'm, I'm on the Black Hills area forest board. We've had these discussions. Ron's worked diligently on every ma- method and way there is to try and find more funding, from the forest board, from taxes and so forth. And, you know, I tried telling him, you know, that he talked about the, the fees, the sticker fees. That's not even enough money to, to keep up the trails for the, for the OHVs and so forth. It's volunteers that help do that. He's probably right with the makeup with some of these committees. They try to do a mix-up of, uh, all different, the whole makeup, the forest boards from pros and cons, and hopefully, hopefully there is a few on there, Ron, that aren't all the business owners, but from their, from their bylaws, they try to mix it up. I hope that's the case. So I'm not, I'm not sure where I'm at today. Quite frankly, I'm not really sure if I'm ready to make a decision today on whether to, to provide funding for thirty-one, six, eighty, that, one of the requests are on there. Maybe I need to do a little more research driving around or have a little more discussion to see how many are doing it, where other residents are paying their, their way. But do I think there needs to be something done? Absolutely. I think when you have such an influx of these vehicles coming into our neighborhoods, there's no way you could've planned for it twenty years ago. What's happening now? I mean, it, it's, it's just unreal. I, I'm getting, I'm building complaints from, from locals that they can't even go camping in our Black Hills because they can't find spots and these people, and, and the numbers are just outrageous. Is it just a one-time thing? I don't, I don't know. But the, these numbers of what's happening out there in the hills, we're definitely gonna have to look at something with this control, cause I, I, I get where everybody's talking about. Uh, and I wanna find solutions, but I don't know if this is it right here today. That's all.
Mr. Chair, and I, I agree with Lloyd, you know, we're not gonna make any firm decisions today, but one thing that we did get accomplished today is that we, there's an awareness. We all know that there's a problem out there, and we gotta take a thirteen-year-old policy that hasn't been looked at for thirteen years, and we need to sit there and do something with it. That every, normally policies are reviewed every five years. This thing's been out there for thirteen years and it's just getting older and older and older, and we need to sit there and look at it real strong and see where, where you wanna go in the future, looking at the growth. I mean, we are growing each year. Assessment went up a hundred and twelve percent in the county. So we need to sit there and be proactive instead of reactive and, and identify what that policy should look like in the next five years.
Chairman. So Joe, one of the things that, that Ron has suggested here is that landowners be responsible for fifty percent of the cost and the county fifty percent of the cost. What is the total cost? What, what's a hundred percent of that cost?
Right now, uh, I just used, we did Idyll Ice Mountain. We did a twenty-five-hundred-foot stretch last week, um, and we got all the data that it's all said and done. It's about two dollars and fifty cents per lineal foot is the total all-in cost. So it's about a sixty, forty split currently. Um, and then I, I'd like, if I may, Chair, uh, just, uh, some other food for thought here. Um, we've got, you know, if the policy's changed, you know, um, we have a hundred and twenty-five miles of road that have an ADT of a hundred and fifty or more. So if you take that hundred and twenty-five miles, um, you know, as Deb said earlier, how do you pick and choose? Who gets it and who doesn't? Um, so say you take, you know, half of that, right, where there's residenials or ranchers or, or businesses for, for that, um, the, the material cost alone is seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Um, so I mean, that's food for thought, cause Andrew from LTAP had a couple bullet points here. Um, you know, once you establish a dust control program, it's very, very hard to retract. Lawrence County's a, a prime example of that. I, I talked to Alan Bonham up in, in Lawrence County, and he's been a highway superintendent since the eighties, and he inherited this program and they just continue to do it, right? I, you know, I don't know if he's got a whole lot of data on cost savings or anything, but they've just, they've done it since the eighties. Um, when I asked Alan why they continue to do so, that was the answer I got, was we've done it since the eighties. Um, so it's, Pennington County's got a lot of, you know, we've got a hundred and twenty-six bridges out there that need to be, you know, something done. We've got eight hundred and thirty-seven miles of road, four hundred and eighty-two of that which are gravel that need to be maintained. We have, we have a lot more needs than just dust control, right? And in a, you know, with the, with the new wheel tax, probably about eleven and a half, twelve million dollar operating budget, four million of that's labor. So now you're talking eight million dollars. You don't get a whole lot done with eight million dollars on eight hundred and thirty-seven miles of road. Um, so that's, that's another reason that I think the mag chloride policy, and that's one reason we haven't looked at it, is I, I feel that it does work and it, and it's been working for thirteen years. Some others may feel differently, but that's, we've looked at a lot of policies. We've changed policies since I've been in place, since I've been in position here. So, um, it's just one that, uh, hasn't crossed the table to, to be looked at, cause we didn't feel it needed to be looked at. It, it's been working for thirteen years. Um, so that's just some food for thoughts. Um, you know, as you go into this, you know, it, it's pretty tough to, to retract a dust policy once you, once you start doing it. This Lawrence County's been doing it since the eighties, you know, if I'm doing my math right, that's thirty-five, you know, if you go late eighties, that's thirty years.
Can I, can I speak?
Commissioner Ross can connect first.
I asked the, uh, before he did, actually before he talked.
Go ahead.
Not trying to be mean, but the bottom line here is we keep talking about taxes and Joe just said it, we're based on priority, um, roads, bridges, things like that first. Um, there's a lot of roads and bridges being done in that district as well. So when you're talking about taxes, it's not just about mag water. It's about what those taxes are spent on of redoing those roads, redoing those bridges, redoing, uh, there's been a lot of guard rail, there's been a lot of different things done in that district as well. So it's not just about mag water. So you pay taxes for everything we do in Pennington County. And for me, the mag water issue, I, I understand, I'm not trying to be bad about this, because I do understand the dust. I mean, I drive the roads and there's ATVs and you hear about it all the time, but how do you base the priority? Do you base it on how many kids there is? Because we talked, we, we just talked about safety of the, of the dust. Well, what about the mag water? Where kids in school buses in eastern, where the ranchers and farmers are doing business? How, how are we prioritizing where we're putting mag water? Because there's more ATV people there? Well, there's ag people paying taxes that have businesses and kids in, in lots of areas. I keep hearing about that. Heard about it for the last couple of years. Why don't you put it on mine? Why don't you change the policy? Because this is a safety issue over here. So I haven't changed it and haven't wanted to change it because I know there's six areas with a lot of, a lot of traffic, but what about those other areas that have public safety issues? It's not just about the dust. It's about trying to conduct a business and not being able to get out because the road isn't quite, there isn't enough rain and, and the road makes them so they can't get out to even take their cattle. So how are we gonna base the, how are we gonna base the policy to be, to be fair in all districts to make sure everybody's taken care? Cause you pick six districts and then you just keep putting it in that area, and then what happens to those other people that have been paying for it for years? They want theirs done next. So I am listening to you, Ron. I truly am listening to what you're saying, but I never have been able to base it on a factual, why should I do you before them? That's, that's why. Because it's, if you're talking safety and, and public health, all those areas have the same issue. And we have a hundred and twenty-five miles of road. Um, everybody could probably find a safety issue and, and something in their district that makes it, or their area or their road, that makes them more important than the other ones. So that's why, for me, uh, you said about the tools in the toolbox, that's why that tool's in the toolbox, based on priority for roads, bridges and other things, and public safety in different areas with different priorities, depending on that priority or that district. That's why that policy was put together, cause it made sense, cause they couldn't figure it out. And I still, I don't think you're gonna be able to figure it out unless you just say, I'm gonna pick six areas and, and do it anyway. So I, I, I'm feeling what you're saying, Ron, and, and I'm not trying to beat this dead horse, but I've been in this, this Pennington County, um, thing and listened to mag water for a long time, and I, and I understand in one sense and the other, I've never been able to find a policy or a prioritization where I feel that I would just go put it in that area. So that's, that's why I'm kind of saying what I'm saying, not cause you're not doing a great job.
That's good.
You've kicked butt.
So, my, my thoughts were, the policy would try to reflect where we're, where we think we're gonna be in five to ten years. And I'm not saying do a hundred and twenty miles, I'm not saying do sixty. I'm saying as a committee that we formed, that we sit down as a group and we identify with the parameters that someone would have to meet before they would get that fifty percent off. It's not all one hundred and twenty-five miles. It would be areas where home is very close to the road, or areas where there's a high density around the road, area where there's higher traffic flows. Those would be the areas, and it wouldn't just be in District One, it could be in District Four or Five or any other district. But once we had those parameters set and somebody met those parameters, that's where they would qualify for the fifty percent off.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Lassiter.
Maybe I misread some of this stuff and I thought, I thought I had understood whenever, um, the citizens paid for this, they paid a hundred percent. But did I hear you, Joe, say it's a sixty, forty split? County pays sixty, they pay forty, or they pay sixty, we pay forty?
So that's an overall cost, right, of the, the application, the preparation, everything that entails putting mag water on a gravel road. The citizens pay sixty, the county pays forty.
Okay. So there is, there already is a cost share in this. Okay. I, I actually was under the impression that they had to pay a hundred percent. Now I'm actually kind of even saying, I think the policy is appropriate, cause there's some skin in the game on both sides. We're maintaining the roads with costs from us, and then the, the citizen is maintaining, you know, they're asking for in that particular area. But when, when I look at it, and I'm gonna kinda touch back to what Commissioner Haggock was talking about, if you wanna talk about safety on roads, in my district, Sage Creek Road is what I constantly get complaints about, and Joe gets complaints about him as well, especially when there's a lot of moisture on the road. And, you know, they, they want those roads stabilized and they're bringing eighteen-wheelers with, you know, grain and cattle and things of that nature. And sometimes they can't drive those roads, or they go off the road on, with, because it's not stabilized enough, at least at certain times. So opening the door and, and, or, I'm sorry, not opening the door, in the committee, um, Commissioner Ross, connect, some of the things I heard you talk about were, you know, only high-density areas and high-traffic areas, but you've, you're gonna have to open it up to other areas where it's a safety issue for our ag business, for the, for the county. Um, Sage Creek Road is what, thirty-something miles long, Joe? Is that?
I don't know that number off the top of my head. I think it's about twenty to twenty-five.
Twenty to twenty-five. So you're talking about having to maybe mag water a good chunk of that road to make it safe for some of these trucks to go through whenever we have, um, a lot of water or, or the things that are going on in those roads. So limiting it, that policy, I don't think does the whole county any good. It, it actually could be a negative impact for even, um, some of the ranchers out in, anywhere in, in the county, whether they're out in my district or even in your district, cause I know there's, there's ranchers out in your area that got cattle out in the hills. So I, again, I think that, I mean, I was assuming the, the citizen was paying all the cost, and now I, I realize it was just sixty, forty. So, I mean, there's, they're not paying at all. So I still think that if the issue is the ATVs, we, we need to look at, at a way to do that. And I'm not, and I'm only gonna say this, um, on that aspect of it. I've been working on the issue in, in my district with, you know, contaminated water, and I kept getting told no, no, no at every turnaround, but I went and dug into the, into the policies. I went and dug into, um, um, different procedures, and I also dug into regulations to find the answers to my question, and I've been able to push forward with it. It's taken me a while to do it, but I've been able to push forward with it and get things moving, and that's the next item on our, on our, um, agenda today. But just because one entity or one individual from that entity says, no, we're not gonna be able to do that, I think there might still be ways to do things, because I was told no, that we couldn't get it, the RAB reestablished, but then guess what? I found the RAB handbook and I went and, and did that. And then I was told a different way to do it, and they said, well, that's not gonna happen. And then I continued to dig and I found different ways to get it moving forward. I think that while some people take the easy route and say, no, we're not gonna do this, or you can't move the funds that way, there's gotta be a way that we can look at it where the industry is picking our proportion of that cost as well, if that's what we're, if that, that's what we're looking at.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you, thank you folks for taking time out of your day to come here and present to us and tell us your, your concerns. I, quite frankly, I think we should, if we table this, it can be brought back up. So my suggestion would be is that we, somebody make a motion table, not for it to go away, but to put it on the table. I think this commission and you guys, we've all did some great debate today and discussions. I think we all need to, um, decelerate it a little bit and think about this a little bit and come back when, when Ron's ready or some other people are to bring it back up, have some more discussions. But I think we've had some great discussion, but I think we're just going back and forth and at this point, and so I would probably, I'd be more than happy to see it on the table, put it on the table, motion, put it on the table. The, the agenda was just debate, dust, dust abatement. The agenda was just debate, dust, dust debatement policy, discussion of the policy, not to actually take any action from what I'm reading through. You know what I'm saying, Ron? It just says discussion and I think we had great discussion. And I think we, we put it on the table and we sit back and breathe a little bit for the next couple of weeks and have some more discussions either off the dais or in the community is my suggestion for today.
Mr. Chair, I don't have a problem with the table, but I just want you to know that I will probably never back down on trying to get that policy reviewed and looked at. Cause I, I just have a hard time thinking that a policy that's thirteen years old and doesn't reflect current conditions that my folks that live in my district, that their experience, that that policy does need to be looked at. What's, I don't have the magic answer. Lloyd probably said it best. Let's just table it and think about it. But I'm going to be thinking about it a lot.
That'll bring back a policy, bring back something you can actually vote on, yes or no. You know what I'm saying? I mean, we can just debate this. I mean, there's good debates either way. But I think we did some great debate today and I think in discussion, I shouldn't say debate, discussion. We had some great discussion and maybe out of that discussion, some drafting can be created and brought forward.
So just to get moving today, I will make a motion to table this and discuss it between the commission and the highway department moving forward.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Mr. Chairman.
Motion and a second.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask if the motioner would, if Commissioner Roskinak would change it to meet the requirements. I was talking to the office manager over, Holly, and she said it's best to postpone rather than to table. Is that correct?
Postponing definitely. Tabling has different rules under Robert's rules.
That's why I always hesitate to do that.
I will change my motion to postpone indefinitely at another time.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Further comment?
I just, you know, one, couple of last food for thought, you know, I appreciate everybody's comments and concerns and everything here, you know. Couple more concerns for you guys to think about when you, when you go back. There's labor concerns that go along with this, right? County Highway's got a lot of stuff to do and not a lot of labor to do it. And doing the Magwater is right in the height of our, our bleeding season, our construction season. It takes away individuals from our Rapid City crew that's already shorthanded, right? We don't have enough manpower to get things done that we need to do. So there's labor concerns there that we need to get things done and get things ready for our, our construction projects for the entire year. So I'll just give you that.
I think I assure you, Joe, you'll be part of the discussion in the coming days.
I think he's done the discussion.
I'd like to, could I make a comment?
Sure. Go ahead.
Yep. There's, you know, we talk about Magwater and a lot of it being used. There's a couple of other processes out there that uses a different product. There's a product called Base One. We've seen some success with that. There's a newer one coming around just in the last couple of years from Litho Technologies. It's a, it's a product that they incorporate into your gravel. One of the things that you want to keep in mind with all of these products is get it tested for compatibility with your product that you're putting it into. In other words, see if it's compatible with your gravel that you, that you want to inject it into. And the Base One process and the Litho Technologies process, that, that's, that's contract work. So they'd be coming in and doing that, which would be, you know, help your crew out. But some other things to consider there and those costs that are involved with that too. So.
Chairman, one, one more thing. I agree with him because we have a hundred and twenty-five miles of road. And if there's something we can add more clay or do something else, maybe we go in that direction instead of Magwater. Because you just said it and I was thinking that earlier and I apologize. Because that would help Ron, that would help all our districts with dust. If we could add an additive, Joe, or we could, a clay factor or a PI, as you call it. Maybe that's more what we do and look at for the future instead of Magwater. And is it cheaper? Or is it more effective maybe in other areas, eastern part of the state or eastern like Wall, that area might have a different product than Ron's product. If I were that commissioner in those dust areas, I guess I would go more that direction than, than the Magwater because Magwater's temporary. Maybe it's something that would last longer based on the PI. And maybe it made the road so you wouldn't have to do it every year that way or every spot every year. So something, food for thought. I'm with you, sir.
So Cliff, would you make yourself available by phone after this to discuss this further too?
Absolutely. And, and another thing, one more comment and I'll quit. You know, we can Magwater year after year after year or, you know, some of these other processes too. And I, and I fully realize it all takes money. And that's, that's a big issue. But I want to look at a plan of maybe in years to come, you know, maybe we need to improve this surface to something greater. You know, we talk about the volumes where it becomes uneconomical to maintain gravel anymore. So when you're going to get in there, do we need to get into a plan in years to come to make those improvements? And, and keep in mind, you know, changing something to an asphalt surface does not eliminate maintenance. You just shift types of maintenance. So you got the cracked ceiling and the chip ceiling to go on with that. So just something to look forward to.
Thank you, Cliff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cliff, for coming today.
Thank you.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion to postpone indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So Ron, I guess that's going to be your challenge to establish this next move on this, the discussion.
I would like to think that this road committee would be part of that discussion because that is infrastructure. Roads are infrastructure. So that would be the committee that I would suggest that we use for a tool moving forward.
I would disagree with that.
Item sixteen, Commissioner Laster.
Thank you very much, Chairman. This is just a letter and I hope everyone is able to read it. We've talked about this many times. It's, it's the reestablishment of a restoration advisory board. Our request to the Air Force base to reestablish that advisory board, mainly because I've had individuals in the district contact me with their concerns about the, the way the Air Force is going. The EPA has also attached a letter showing their support for the restoration advisory board being reestablished. And while you don't see the letter here, her supervisor has also submitted a letter directly to the Air Force from, from her supervisor. This is purely to get the Air Force to establish the restoration advisory board. It's nothing to say anything negative about the base or the community. It's so that we can have open communication and discussion about the, the path forward to all the restoration for those that are, that are contaminated with the PFons, PFons water. It's based off of their guide, their restoration advisory board rulebook. I placed that in there so you could see that it's, you know, they will establish one if local government representatives have requested it. That's what I'm asking for today is that we would agree to request that the base commander establish a RAB so that the people can talk directly as a group. I will let you know, I think it's going to be very beneficial because a lot of people had different ideas of what they wanted, how they wanted their properties to be restored. But after talking with them, they didn't understand what they were asking for. And it actually might be more cost-effective for the Air Force if we're actually having these conversations. After I've done a lot of research into the aquifers and where they're going to be putting things. So I think having a community talk about it rather than individuals who may not have all of that information at once sometimes can be an issue. So I would just ask the board to support this.
So Commissioner, do you know how many properties have been impacted by this?
So the Air Force will not tell us how many properties. However, the newsletter that they put out, they've shown zones. And there are several zones along the Vox Elder Creek, all the way out to the Cheyenne River. And they will only tell us that there are ninety-six impacted individuals. Now, I don't know if that's households, is that individual connections, is that individual properties? I mean, they're, they're not giving out a lot of information and they, they haven't even shared it with the EPA. The EPA has an agreement to share that information with them, but they haven't shared that with them. So some of the information is not as forthcoming.
Okay. Thank you. So is there a motion?
Move to approve the chair's signature and letter requesting reestablishment of the restoration advisory board for the Air Force firefighting foam contamination issue.
Second.
And a motion and a second for the discussion.
Chairman.
Commissioner Haddock.
Just to thank you to Travis. He's done a lot of work on this. And we see we have a lot of passion up here from our commissioners on the things that interest them for their district. And also this is huge. This is effect on water. So thank you for all the work you have done as well on this project because it's going to mean a lot to the people out there. And again, you've done a lot of research. So thank you, Travis.
Any members of the public wish to speak on this issue? Not back to the commission for the discussion.
Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Travis, I was just looking on this when it says at least fifty local citizens petitioning for the RAB. So you're going to be able to do that. Federal, tribal, state and local government representatives have requested. So this would be our, our, does it have to be all four or just one from?
Only one.
Just one. Okay. Because I, I question this because one of the meetings that I had in Maryland last week was with the military and we talked about some of the environmental stuff that, that you're talking about. That, it's called REPI. When I get my report to at the end of the deal, I'll talk about that.
Yep. I actually put that very specific portion of the rulebook in here so that we understood that it was, out of these four, any one of those could require, well, you have to have the installations closing. That could cause one, at least fifty local citizens could have petition. That could cause it. Federal, tribal, state or local government, where local government, that could cause it if we requested it or the installation has determined the need for it. So there's four different things, but you only need one of those to trigger the RAB.
Okay. I've got a motion and a second for the discussion. There are none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item seventeen, Adams County. Commissioner Haddock and Brittany.
Brittany, I'll let you go first and then I can kind of tell.
Hi. Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Moller, Planning Director. I'll just give you kind of some back history of how we even got to the Adams County visit in the first place. Originally, when the cannabis legislation went through, the voters, our office staff started doing some research on some areas in other states that had regulations on cannabis facilities. And actually, our deputy director, Jason, had reached out to Adams County in Colorado because we had seen their regulations and thought that they would be a good, a good policy, I guess, to follow for us going forward. They took a pretty conservative approach to their implementation. So we did reach out to our counterparts in the county and they were gracious enough to invite us to come down to do some touring with them on some of the facilities and go over some of the policies and procedures, some of the things that they learned, some of the, the lessons learned, some of the things not to do and to do. And it was a really good opportunity that we had gotten to go and see these facilities. We got to tour two cultivation facilities, a large-scale cultivation facility and a small-scale cultivation facility, two manufacturing facilities and three dispensaries. One of the big takeaways that, in my opinion, and then Megan and Commissioner Haddock can piggyback on it is one of the biggest things that they had spoke to us about was relationship. Working with the industry, working with other jurisdictions and things, and really building those strong relationships with each other. Because it seems even with talking with the industry, that even with the regulators, that they just had a very good relationship. It seems like things were running very well. There was just some mutual respect. And I think that their program was a good program. It was a good opportunity to, to visit and see those things. So I don't know if you want to piggyback on anything, Megan, or, thank you, Megan.
Megan Kruger with the state's attorney's office. Yeah, so obviously there is some really new legislation and some really new regulations. Those have not been approved yet. We're thinking that it's probably going to be October, late September. They had kind of changed the timeline for when those regulations were going to be approved. My office has kind of come to the determination that we need to get any ordinances done before those regulations have been approved by the state. And the reason for that is because if we have facilities, businesses that are wanting to start up and we don't have any ordinances and we don't have any zoning, they're going to be grandfathered in and that's going to cause issues. So from the state's attorney's perspective, we want to kind of move quickly on this and get these ordinances done as quickly as we can because we don't want businesses that are in places that we don't want them. Obviously, there are going to be rules and regs about where we want them. And those discussions are probably mostly going to be held, I think, Friday. But in terms of the rules and regs and the statutes, everything is very new. And things are different from Colorado to South Dakota, to Illinois, to, I mean, every state is a little bit different. So we can steal bits and pieces and some things we will have to do ourselves. And hopefully we can kind of use a Frankenstein of stuff from other places so we don't have to recreate the wheel for something that works not only for the county, but also for the businesses that are going to be coming into the county.
Thank you. Jason, do you have anything to share about our trip? I had a great time. We had a great group. So I agree with Megan. I don't think we have to recreate the wheel. We learned from other people and their backgrounds on it. Adams County was a great place to learn that with Brandon, Andrea and Joaquin. And they got his name right. They have a county of five hundred thousand people. They have three cultivation, three manufacturing, a sixth dispensary, if I'm correct. It was eye-opening because I thought, I just thought it was going to be more of the, I don't know, the black market kind of feel. That's what they call it, kind of just like a whatever, everybody kind of does what they want and if they get caught, kind of thing. So. And, and it's great because it's kind of like the liquor laws. That's what it reminds me of. When liquor became legal, that's what we're kind of doing with marijuana now. So again, I didn't, I really wasn't for the all marijuana thing and saying, really, this is just crazy. And then you get into, like I tell people, and we learned being reactive instead of proactive. So once you're more proactive, because you already know I'm ADD and I'm usually reactive, then after that I'm a little more proactive. But finding out the information and finding out the facts on everything was pretty amazing. The people that are in that business there. They are very professional. They are very good at what they do. We learned what hydrocarbons, getting the resin by hydrocarbons in the manufacturing and some are doing it by frozen flowers, as they call it, talking about trichomes and cannabinoids and holy cow, I think I got it. The dabs, what dabs are shatter and all of that kind of stuff. And then learning too, that the main thing that they did that they learned from Denver, cap it. Cap it at a certain amount on each of the cultivation, manufacturing, dispensary. Do one at first. That would be my idea. That's my personal opinion. Do one of each if you're going to do it that way. Learn from how to do it small, like they did. They said, start small, cap it and then move forward after that. They have a lottery and different things. Megan's right. Some of those rules do not apply to South Dakota. So they were a plethora of information and we will be taking probably, I'm pretty sure these guys, they got it down. Pieces and parts of what's going to work for South Dakota and us. And I think with this group, we had, like I said, amazing group. I think they've figured it out with Brandon, Andrea and Mckin, that they could call them at any time. Megan made some nice, a lawyer from Nabo. Boy, she was tough. And then she was pretty awesome. And then a younger lady from Adams County. Yep. So she made some really good relationships and, and that was the main thing. And you guys know that, Holly and Lloyd. You guys went to Washington and figured out some relationships. Some people think you, you know, you can learn that online. Why don't you just do that online? A couple of people said, I said, because those relationships build us opportunities or just questions that maybe they've been there before or where we can get, like Brandon had state and federal levels that he, he had contacts for. had state and federal levels that he, he had contacts for. Those contacts are going to be huge for South Dakota and what we do moving forward. And I just have to say, Pennington County, and I told them, we do it best at many things. And we teach usually other states like they do how to do it right. So, like I said, I think with this team and with Pennington County and the things that we learned, it was pretty amazing. And thanks, ladies and guys. Dwayne did come with us and Brandon, or Brandon and Jason. And three days, I'll just tell you, they said you cannot get a buzz from, you have to eat it or ingest it or do something. That's not true. Those rooms stuck so, didn't touch anything, just smelt it. Boy, just smelling, the cultivation, the rooms are bigger than this. And it was just like, holy crap. And they were all laughing at me because, yeah, you get a smell from it and it gives you a buzz. So, it was pretty crazy. I didn't think, I never thought in a million years that you'd see a room full of marijuana with buds this big going, holy cow, that's legal. So, it's weird how far it's came. But, I encourage you, if you ever have a chance, if you go to Colorado, go to Adams County, meet these three folks and get schooled because it's pretty amazing and I think you'll learn on it.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner La Croix.
I just will follow. The Barquels Area County officials, they gave a presentation to us last Friday. So, very good. Thank you for the update. I agree with this. And you talked about how, one of the comments you made, it's a science becomes science. One of the things I'm grateful for in the community right now, instead of the debate of are you for, against, and the big fight and dah 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 dah, it is what it is. Now, it's time to get your hands dirty and.
Educate.
And do the education and the working to get good policies and procedures in place that the community will accept. So, I just wanted to thank you guys for taking that time out to get out, go out there and do that and for the presentation Friday for the Barquels Area County Commissioners.
Also learned what Lululemons are. And I didn't know what those were.
[laughing]
Those two taught me what Lululemons are. They're yoga pants.
Any public comment relative to this issue? Seeing none and we don't have any action that we need to take on. This is for information only. We appreciate it. Thank you much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eighteen, Road Advisory Committee.
Yes.
Brittany.
Item eighteen is the name change for the Road Advisory Committee. At our first meeting on June seventeenth, the members of the committee discussed changing the name of the group from the Road Advisory Committee to the Infrastructure Advisory Committee. The committee members felt at that time that including other infrastructures such as water, sewer, and drainage was equally important and should be part of discussions and recommendations just with the development that's going on in the area. The group felt that that was a more appropriate name so that they could branch out and look at some other things. So, at this time, we are recommending that the name of the committee be officially titled the Infrastructure Advisory Committee. Our next meeting will be, is scheduled for July twenty ninth at three P M. in the Planning and Zoning Conference Room.
So, moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Adcock.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Laster. Any public comment? Any commission discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item nineteen.
We approve of the vouchers two million two seventy-six six six zero four one.
You're one off. Nineteen.
Okay, we're ahead.
Well, the South Dakota Association County Commissioners has elections coming up. They have a, somebody from West River has an opportunity to be the candidate for second vice president for the association. And I think this is for information only, right, Ollie?
And in the past, if anybody's interested, the board has provided their support of that individual moving forward through the process. So, this would be the opportunity if anybody is seeking that or simply information only at this point.
So, there's a nominating committee that's already been chosen from Harding County, Cottington County, Sully County, Brown County, and Davidson County.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner La Croix.
Respectfully, I would ask, are you interested in the second vice president?
Am I? Haven't decided yet.
Well, being in a, since it's on the agenda and for discussion, and you are a representative, you've been on the board, that's why I asked. I would, if you do think about it and decide that that's what you want to do, I would bring it forward as a recommendation from this commission and to the.
Well, I think it would be good to have somebody from Pennington County.
Yep.
Serve in that capacity, so.
I think you're correct.
Yeah. So, I, yeah, I would be willing to enter my name into that.
I think me and Holly can make that happen.
Fixing up two weekly hotels wearing.
Okay.
The commission in full support?
I agree.
Looks like we have consensus. Thanks, Gary, for stepping up.
Okay. You're welcome. Next item is vouchers.
Moved to approve the vouchers in the amount of two million two hundred and seventy-six thousand six hundred and sixty dollars and forty-one cents.
I moved.
Got a motion and a second for the discussion. Any public comment? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Items from the public. Yes, come on forward.
I just want to speak today first that in my past history, I own a trucking company here in Rapid City. And I had an employee test positive for marijuana a number of years ago. And the medical review officer told me that the only way that they were able to test positive for anything secondhand or inhaled would have been if they were in a phone booth with twenty of their friends. So, I don't know what you were doing.
I was in a big.
Your name?
My name is Rick Wolf. I own Dakota Express Transportation. I sent an email to three of you, the only ones I had emails for last night. Yesterday morning, about eight-thirty in the morning, there's some new stop signs. I wasn't aware of them until yesterday in Box Elder. I'm sure you all are. I was headed out there in a semi truck and there was a gal on the interstate that, I don't know why. Anyway, so, she was kind of slow on the interstate, got ex with the interstate, didn't use a turn signal, got into fourteen sixteen in Box Elder. And she moved to the left lane immediately and I went on by her and I see that she was doing this down in her lap. You have a pretty good view from a semi truck into a passenger vehicle that's beside you.
Right here.
So, I'm in the right, in the right-hand lane, get to see the, they've got a warning sign in the median out there on the left side of the road saying, hey, new stoplight ahead, or new stop, intersection stop sign ahead. And then there's a warning before that. I got to, and that, that stop sign is at, not Tower Road, can't think of it now. But, and I had stopped and there was a gal here coming from Radar Hill Road at the railroad tracks. And we arrived about the same time. Again, I'm driving a semi truck. And she, I had eye contact with her and she started to go. Well, I'd kind of been watching this gal in my right-hand mirror that was driving and doing this at the same time. I seen that this gal was not going to stop. So, I blew the horn at the gal that was getting ready to go and she got stopped. This lady in this Jeep, fifty mile an hour right through the stop sign. Last night, I went out there, there was a Box Elder city officer. And he was actually sitting there patrolling it. And I visited with him for just a little bit. I guess there's already been a couple of accidents out there. And the only thing I can suggest, and you know what, I deal in safety with my own business. I have for a number of years. The only thing I can think of is I've, is I've traveled is maybe some rumble strips out there. This gal, she didn't know stop signs was there.
Yeah.
She didn't know when she went through it. But, it was almost a fatality. Somebody's daughter, somebody's wife. And it wasn't the gal in the Jeep that was going to die. I'm just asking you to take a look at it and do something. Again, the Box Elder guy told me that there's already been a couple of accidents there and they're patrolling it. He was sitting there last night when I went back out there just to kind of look it over. So, something I think needs immediate attention. Don't know what it costs, you know, they grind them into the road. I don't know if there's one that you can glue on top of the road. But, at least this gal that was doing something that she shouldn't have been, maybe would have had a heads up that there was a stop sign coming up. That's all.
We appreciate the information.
Thank you, sir.
I don't know, Joe just walked in. I don't know if Joel heard that conversation or not. This.
Didn't hear the conversation. I was going to text you.
Oh, okay.
And myself, that you guys.
Well, Mr. Wolf was just talking about the new stop signs around fourteen sixteen there.
Yes.
And how close they were to an accident there yesterday. And he stopped and talked to a Box Elder law enforcement officer last night, said they've already had a couple of accidents. He's suggesting maybe some rumble strips or something to call it to people's attention. They're probably normally have been driving that road and aren't aware of the stop signs are there and aren't.
Yeah. So, the stop signs there, the message boards have been up since, I believe, the middle of June, warning people that this was coming. And Box Elder and Pennington County have put stuff out on Facebook and social media saying, hey, this is coming. These stop signs are coming. We do agree that there needs to be rumble strips, but that needs to be a contractor to do this. So, and I'm not, we haven't looked at the state to see if they have a contractor that we can just have come get and do it. But, guessing this year, they're busy and we're not going to be able to get it done until next year. But, there are flashing beacons, there's, there's message boards, there's stop sign ahead signs. And there's, you know, there's plenty of warning signs. People just choose to ignore them, I guess.
Chairman.
Commissioner Adcock.
I think the flashing catches people's eye more, even if you're texting when they shouldn't be. It's a little bit more, you know, so you see, like, what's that light for? What is that for? That might work a little bit better. Sir, you, like you said, you've been traveling a lot with your truck.
I, I think flashing lights do. In the daytime, you know, last night, it was real prominent. You didn't own, even if you were texting and driving like the gal that I told you was yesterday.
You weren't going to help.
But, I don't think next year is soon enough. They've already had a couple of accidents. I promise you, this would have been a serious accident yesterday or a fatality. And it's too late. I think it needs something to be done now. And the only thing, because this gal was texting and driving that I think would have got her stopped was a rumble in the road. And she went, oh, shoot. She didn't drive, she didn't go ignore the stop sign. She didn't know that it was there. She didn't just, you know what I mean? Well, and I will say this, that the implementation, implementation of those stop signs came from a, we had the state look at a couple of different hotspot areas, Country Road and Elkvale being one of those, fourteen sixteen Radar Hill Road. We looked at several different options for this intersection. And this is the, the recommendation that came down from, from the state to put stop signs in there. Ultimately, there needs to be a stoplight put in there. But, at the two and a quarter million dollars, we chose to go with the, the stop signs to alleviate, especially the traffic in the mornings coming off of Radar Hill Road onto fourteen sixteen. It gets very, very backed up. So, ultimately, hopefully, when fourteen sixteen is reconstructed, it, it won't be an issue. But, this was a temporary, long-term solution, is what I'll call it, to alleviate the traffic congestion. And yes, you're, you're correct. There have been several accidents. I know, I shouldn't say several. I know there's, I know of one for sure, the morning that we did put them on.
Mr. Chair.
Since the stop signs been put in, there's been. I know of one. That's all I can say. PD guy told me that had a couple already. I know of one that we got word of because they called our office. That's the only one I know of.
Commissioner La Croix.
First of all, thank you for taking time out of your day to spend a couple hours here.
I'm pretty safe for it.
To present, to present your case.
I don't want to see, you know, I had thirty years of trucking till October last year when two young people and another person ran into one of my, back under my trucks at Whitewood. And there were three fatalities. And I've never been involved in fatality with my business ever before that. And I hoped it ended that way.
Yeah.
Wasn't our fault, but it happened. Nonetheless, three people are dead. And there wasn't anything anybody could do about their driving. You know, what I told my drivers was, is, you know, they were okay. And if they had run into a car going a hundred and fifty miles an hour, they might have killed somebody else. It was an innocent party.
Well, I appreciate you bringing that to our attention. The rumbles, I do understand. What I'd like to say is, if it is possible, I think we should try. It is, we do, we have it on sixteen coming down to that stop sign. We have some rumbles, people, and there's stoplights there because they'll, if it, if it's possible. But, I, you know, as Joe just stated, you know, we've got several hotspots in our area, our areas of concern, you should say, where Elkvale, further down the country road, we've had some major accidents. And so, I think they've, they've done a good job of trying to prepare and get the news out for people. But, you can't protect people from themselves.
You know, years ago, I lived on Twilight Drive when there was a four-way stop at Twilight Drive and Racetrack Road and drove that every day. I grew up out in that country. And now, for me to drive down Twilight Drive on an occasion, you know, I'm the guy that's stopping on Twilight because I still think there's a four-way stop there. And people are going, what, what are you doing? You know? You'll see that as well. And, yeah, I don't know if there's some glue on ones. I just, you know, there's, I think there's been three or four fatalities now at Mall Drive and Elkvale. And why? Because people are running the stop sign at Mall Drive. They're not doing it on purpose. They're just driving up and they're either distracted. There's a lot of people, if, I don't know what the laws are actually regarding texting and driving, but there sure are a lot of people doing it. And it's inattentive driving. It's not bad roads. It's not, you know, visibility. It's broad daylight. So, thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming today.
Thank you. Thank you, Joel.
Thank you.
We have a five-minute break.
I'll take a motion for five-minute break.
Or ten, whatever.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Commissioner Adcock, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item A.
Cody Sac, Environmental Planner. Item A is variance VA twenty-one dash sixteen. It is to reduce the minimum setback requirement between existing mobile homes in a mobile home park from twenty feet to six feet. The owner and applicant is Pacific Properties LLC. The size of the property is ten point two acres and takes access off a universal drive. When looking at variances, we look to get to a prong approach. For prong number one, number one, the request does not appear to be a threat or nuisance to the neighborhood. Number two, there are other mobile home parks in the area. The requested use appears to conform with the neighborhood. However, the mobile homes in the area appear to meet the twenty-foot required setback. Number three, the zoning ordinance, no, the resort, the zoning ordinance requires a twenty-foot setback from all mobile homes. Number five, no, however, in the event of a fire, a fire on one site could spread to another structure. And prong number two, whether a special condition exists to grant the variance, no, no special condition exists. However, the mobile homes are existing. For property history, lots two through twelve, sixteen through twenty-nine, thirty-three B, thirty-four, thirty-five, forty-one, forty-three, forty-five, forty-seven, and fifty-two have existing mobile homes on the lots. There is onsite wastewater treatment system. They put three systems in in two thousand and twenty that was approved by the city of Rapid City. This was routed around for near apartment review. No major comments or concerns were received. The applicants received a condition use permit to bring an existing mobile home park upon residence into compliance. The park was legal non-conforming. However, the applicants applied to expand the number of mobile homes allowed on site, which brings section three oh five of the zoning ordinance into effect, which requires the twenty-foot setback. This variance only applies to existing mobile homes. And applicants are aware that any future placement of the mobile homes will need to maintain the twenty-foot setback or receive another variance. So, staff does recommend denial of variance VA twenty-one dash sixteen. There are no special conditions that exist on the property that would excuse a little enforcement of pending how the zoning ordinance, section three oh five. However, if the board of adjustment disagrees and decides to approve the request, staff would add the condition that this variance request only applies to existing mobile homes. All of their structures must maintain the proper setback in separate variances for the structure.
So, Cody, can you show us which, which mobile homes this actually impacts?
So, all along here, these ones right in here do not meet the twenty-foot setback. And I believe this one does not. So, it would be these existing mobile homes that would apply. The applicant worked with their office and asked, because these are all separate distances. So, like, one might be eleven feet, one might be fourteen feet. So, the closest one, the six feet, is between these two mobile homes right here. And that's this picture. The six feet would cover, cover all of the other mobile homes. This is the closest one.
So, I'll make a motion.
And the motion is?
Move to approve the condition granting the variance. It does run, I believe, does run counter to public interest. These mobile homes are already. These mobile homes are already placed in the property already, and so it's granting the variance, not only observes the ordinance of these, ordinance as spirit, but also ensures substantial justice is done.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Further discussion, is there anybody in the public that would like to speak in regard to this issue? Any none back to the commission?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner La Croix.
I agree with the motion on the floor, this was grandfathered in, and I think part of the, uh, you know, yeah, it triggered again when they want to add more, but part of the requirements is the newer ones are going to meet the setbacks and so forth of the expansion. And I, and I believe if we totally enforced this, we would be displacing homes if we had, if we had to follow this words, and since it is grandfathered in, I think naturally, it will change, so. I'm in support of it.
Thank you. Further discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross.
Cody, I just wonder what, what's the age of that park?
I believe it's, uh, goes back to the eighties or nineties, from what I can tell from aerials. Uh, some of those, some of them are newer, like those mobile, some mo- mobile homes have been moved in, um, and they were placed in the exact same spot as the ones that were previously there were. Um, so the building permits were granted for it, because it was the legal non-conforming. Um, however, when they wanted to bring in additional ones, I think they had like thirty-some mobile homes on here, and they wanted to add, add additional ones. Um, they'd lose their grandfathered status for, for the mobile home park, so they had to get the conditional use permit, and the conditional use permit in that section requires a twenty-foot setback.
Yeah, the concern I would have is the, the fire safety concern. But. Not going to correct it there.
Yeah, and if those, if those mobile homes are ever moved out, the new ones coming in would have to meet the twenty-foot setback, this is just for how the park is today.
And there's not, if some of those are moved out, I mean, there wouldn't be room for that same size to be in there, I mean, uh, would there, I mean, they don't have enough access, enough property, though.
They didn't, they'd either have to readjust it, or they'd have to come in and request a specific variance for that, for that lot again.
Okay. Okay, further discussion? Have a motion and a second to approve, uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B.
Item B is subdivision regulation variance SV twenty-one dash fourteen. It is to waive the requirement to dedicate and improve in an, in undeveloped section line right-of-way. The applicant and landowner is Catherine Peliki, the surveyor's baseline surveying. Access is off High Seega Road, and there is no flood hazard area on the property. When approving variances, we take a two-pronged approach. Prong number one, whether granting the variance runs counter to public interest. Uh, number one, proposed tracks one and two, uh, have an improved access off High Seega Road. Number two, the neighborhood is residential in nature, improvement, improved rights of way do exist to provide access to, to proposed tracks one and two. Number three, where an existing section line right-of-way, um, or portion of the section line right-of-way is located within a new subdivision or adjoining any part of the new subdivision, the entire six to six feet of the section line right-of-way shall be dedicated or improved by the developer. Number four, the current comprehensive plan identifies the property as rural residential district, which requires a three-acre lot size. Proposed tracks one and two will be twenty-three point eight-five acres and six point one-two acres. Number five, uh, High Seega Road is a, is an existing right-of-way that is used to provide access to proposed tracks one and two, uh, for emergency purposes. And then prong number two, whether a special condition exists to grant the variance. Number one, access to the proposed lots is provided by an improved right-of-way off High Seega Road. One A, requiring the section line right-of-way to be improved or dedicated would require the applicant to construct a second access road to the property when the existing access exists. And, uh, one B, the ordinance is in place to ensure that all lots are, as the proposed subdivision are provided. Uh, proposed track one and two have an existing access off High Seega Road. Uh, currently on the property, there is a single-family residence with, uh, four accessory structures. There is a septic system on the property. Proposed track one will be twenty-three point eight-five acres, and will contain all the structures that were listed above, and track two will be six point two oh acres, and will be vacant. This was routed around for an interdepartmental review, uh, there were no major comments or concerns that were received. Uh, so staff is recommending approval of subdivision regulation variance SV twenty-one dash fourteen, as there is currently an existing improved right-of-way for proposed tracks one and two of Peliki subdivision to take access off.
The applicant here, Cody?
Uh, yes.
Would you like to say anything, or just answer questions, or?
I'd just answer questions.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Move for approval.
Second.
I got a motion and a second by Commissioner La Croix and Commissioner Lester to approve. Um, any, any public comments in regard to this? Uh, back to the commission. Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item C.
Morning, commissioners, Jason Thenson, deputy director. Agenda item C is subdivision regulations variance twenty-one dash fifteen. It is to waive the requirement to dedicate and improve the undeveloped section line right-of-way. Applicants and landowners are Alvin and Lois Rudd. Uh, site location is a half-mile west of Dauphin Bow Road, currently zoned agriculture district. Access is off Dauphin Bow Road, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. When making recommendations to the board of commissioners, staff uses two-pronged approach. First prong determines whether granting a variance runs counter to the public interest. I have those on the screen, you can follow along, I'll read staff's responses, starting with number one. Dauphin Bow Road is an improved section line that provides access to all existing proposed lots. Number two, the neighborhood is agriculture and residential in nature. Number three, yes, in such instances where adjoining landowner may decline to participate in the right-of-way dedication, or if it is not practical or not desirable to construct the street within existing section line right-of-way, the board of county commissioners may authorize a new right-of-way where the developer will improve and dedicate the entire required street right-of-way within the boundaries of the developing property. Easements and dedicated improved rights of way exist. Number four is NA. Number five, no, existing implanted rights of way exist to provide access to all existing lots for ingress and egress and emergency response purposes. Prong two, number one, yes, citing Dauphin Bow Road as an existing improved section line that provides access to the subdivision, one A, yes. Dedicating and improving the unimproved portion of the section line between sections eight and seventeen will create an unnecessary hardship, because an existing planted right-of-way already provides access to the proposed subdivision. There's no need for additional right-of-way. And one B, the ordinance as spirit is to ensure access that provided to proposed lots, existing planted rights of way already exist to provide access to the proposed subdivision. This is a, uh, sample of the proposed lot, uh, you can see that outlined in blue, the section line that they are wa- are requesting to waive improvements in dedication is in red. The proposed lot as it, as it sits, or as it is proposed, I guess, is forty point six acres. It will contain a single-family residence with an attached garage, as well as an onsite wastewater treatment system. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review. County Highway, uh, did respond stating that since the applicant is not taking, is not asking to vacate the section line right-of-way, and access does not run along or within the section line, the highway department does not oppose this request. Staff also did receive a letter, uh, from, uh, the adjoining property owner. Uh, his property is down here to the lower left of the screen. He was under the impression that the RUDs were requesting to open and dedicate this right-of-way. Uh, I talked to him on the phone yesterday, explained to him that it's the exact opposite, that they're not looking to do any dedication or improvements to that right-of-way, so he requested to withdraw his, uh, letter of opposition. Uh, staff's analysis of the request is that the board of commissioners did approve preliminary plaque twenty-one dash thirty-nine on July sixth of this year, and approval of this variance will satisfy condition number four and allow the planning process to continue. And with that, staff recommends approval.
Here.
Are, are the applicants here? Okay, would you like to say anything in regard to it, or do you just want to answer questions? Okay, Commissioner Haddock.
So, based on there is special conditions on the property, I would recommend approval based on staff recommendation.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Haddock, second by Commissioner Lester, uh, further discussion. Any public comment in regard to this? Back to the commission, any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item D.
Uh, Cody Sack, environmental planner. Item D is subdivision regulation variance SV twenty-one dash sixteen. It is to waive the requirements not to construct additional water storage for domestic use and fire protection requirements in a planned unit development. The applicant and owner is Brian and Michelle Lindsay. Uh, access is off of Abigail Drive, and the size of the property is three point oh seven acres. There is no special flood hazard area on the property. When approving variances, we take the, we look at the two-pronged approach. Prong number one, whether we're granting the variance runs counter to public interest. Uh, number one, yes, the request is not a blight on the neighborhood and does not appear to be a threat or a nuisance, but if a fire occurs, the undersized water storage could affect the ability to stop and spread on to neighboring properties. Also, the Southern Hills Water District only has water hookups for seven lots within Mountain subdivision. If water storage is not added, four lots within the subdivision would require individual wells. Number two, the subject property is on planned unit development with three point oh seven acres and matches the surrounding zoning and lot sizes in the area. The applicants want to place a single-family residence on the property, a used by right, and planned unit development. Number three, under the subdivision regulations, a subdivision of fifteen more lots must be served by a central water system. Mountain Meadows subdivision is connected to the Rushmore Ranch of State's water system. Plot note thirteen for Mountain Meadows states that after sixty-five building permits have been issued between the two subdivisions, then surety for additional water storage is required. Number four, the current and future land use is planned unit development. Number five, inadequate water storage has the potential to inhibit the ability to find a fire in the area. That would in turn affect the public safety. Also, inadequate water storage could affect surrounding property access to water. For prong number two, whether a special condition exists to grant a variance. Uh, number one, no special condition exists that would prevent additional water storage. The property is hilly, forested, and flat, there is no impediment to constructing additional water storage. Uh, the lot is vacant of any structures, and, uh, the applicants are looking to vacate notes seven, eight, nine, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen for lot one, block three, Mountain Meadows subdivision. That request will be heard at the July twenty-sixth, uh, twenty twenty-one Planning Commission meeting, and before the board on August third, twenty twenty-one. Some history in the subdivision, in June sixth, two thousand and eight, uh, the commissioners approved layout plan LPL twenty dash oh eight with conditions. Uh, there have been other subdivision, or, uh, subdivision regulation variances granted for this request, uh, in this area, on this lot on, on the screen, and then on this lot as well. Uh, those were approved, uh, as long as the applicants, uh, installed the sprinkler system in the house. The applicants today have agreed to install a sprinkler system in the house. Uh, this was routed around for an interdepartmental review. Uh, the Battle Creek Fire District came back and said that the Fire District recommends that at a minimum state codes be followed. Uh, with that, staff recommends denial of subdivision regulation variance SV twenty-one dash sixteen. There's no special conditions on the property that would excuse a literal enforcement of the subdivision regulations. If the board of adjustment disagrees and decides to approve this request, staff would add the condition that the subdivision regulation variance only applies to lot one, block three, Mountain Meadows subdivision.
Chairman.
Commissioner Haddock.
So, they did agree to put the sprinkler system in?
Okay.
I can't make a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chair. One second. So, the applicants, want to speak on this, or answer questions?
They are not here.
They're not here, okay. Commissioner Roskinak.
Uh, I was just curious, uh, additional water storage, what would that be in gallons that they would need?
I believe at one point for the addition.
Five hundred gallons?
You, for what, what they'd have to add for storage for the entire subdivision? It was to go up to, uh, Mountain Meadows has seventy-five, it was to go up to ninety thousand.
So we're talking seventy, eighty thousand gallons?
Fif- no, fifteen thousand gallons would have to be added.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I'll second the motion that I heard.
I got a motion and a second. Further discussion?
I didn't make a. Yeah, there was an emotion.
Oh, there was no motion?
I'll make a motion to, uh.
Okay.
Approve the variance.
Just based on the fact that we've done this with two or three other lots, and we'll be doing it with another ten or thirteen, ten or thirteen in the future, if they, uh, follow through with the sprinkler system.
There a second?
Second.
And a second. Further discussion? So, Cody, I, I had read in there where, I couldn't find it just now, but, uh, and I think it was Fire Service that recommended at least meet the minimum state code.
The Battle Creek Fire.
Does this meet, meet the state code then?
Uh, yes, and talking that, that requirement, um, what happened when the, when the subdivision was platted, um, they had to meet a certain requirement for gallons per minute for, um, for fire suppression. The, uh, Southern Hills Water couldn't meet that requirement, so they worked with the county and, uh, fire administrator at the time, and they came up with, if you installed the sprinkler system, then you're only at five hundred gallons per minute, um, which the, um, Southern Hills Water can meet, um, so that's where that requirement comes in.
Mr. Chair. Thank you. Commissioner La Croix.
I got a question for Mr. Roskinak. He's knowledgeable on this, that, if I remember right, from our prior discussions on this, this was a development that was moving forward, I mean, I think they did the right thing by putting it on the, it's the plot that they put that requirement on, with a bunch of stuff, so in the future, this, we'd know. But, isn't that kind of what happened, is the development kind of stopped, and the, the developer who was there may have abandoned, and somebody else bought it?
Develop, uh, things went south, and the developer just kind of, a lot of infrastructure that was supposed to have been, been developed, never got developed. And I think that, when completed, it was supposed to be fifty or sixty lots, and now it's just sitting there at thirteen.
Yeah.
And those thirteen lots really doesn't, they don't justify what they would have needed for the fifty or sixty, so.
Yeah.
We're going to be going through this, uh, when they sell them, and unfortunately, I don't know how transparent that is, when the realtor sells these lots, I want an indecided inspection on Saturday on a neighboring lot. And the lady that I met said, her neighbor on the neighboring lot, when she found out about this, put a first sale sign on it, and so it's, it's really a mess, and it'd be nice if we could, uh, kind of get this started out before we keep moving forward, so we don't have to keep going through these, uh, variances.
I, I wanted to bring that up, because I, you're right, I mean, there's a reason why we're here in, in granting the variances, because something extraordinary happened that out of the original plan, so. I just wanted to bring that up, so people who are in the audience know that we're just not granting it just because it was, the, the original plan was, infrastructure was supposed to be there, and, and it didn't happen, so.
Chairman.
Uh, Commissioner Haddock.
We were going to buy a lot in Rushmore Ranch, and the realtor didn't tell us, we found it out ourselves about the sewer and water, but you can connect. It's going to cost you on Rushmore Ranch even about ten thousand dollars to put those lines in, so maybe up to twenty, just depending how far your house was, so. Um, they are not telling people that. Uh, my husband's a contractor, so he knew that, to check on that, but unfortunately, people are not knowing that those hookups, if they do hook up, or if they have to do a well, that it's not the same as the rest of the lots that are in there.
Further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion to approve indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item E.
Morning again, commissioners, Jason Thenson, deputy planning director. Agenda item E is subdivision regulations variance twenty-one dash seventeen. I apologize, my slide did not get updated. Uh, the request is to waive the requirement to sub, to submit percolation tests and profile hole information for proposed lots one A, one B, one C, and lot one D. The applicant is Betty Johnson, she owns the property with Jesse Lickerman. Location of the property is west of the intersection of Deegan Drive and Tall Pine Road. It is currently zoned rural residential district, it is used for residential purposes, uh, as well as vacant lots. Access is off of Deegan Road, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. When considering variance requests, staff uses a two-pronged approach to make the recommendation. I'll read those that are on the screen, um, starting with number one. No, proposed lot one D contains a single wide mobile home that is not habitable and rarely. No, proposed Lot One D contains a single wide mobile home that is not habitable and rarely accessed. Number two, no, the neighborhood is residential in nature. The existing single wide mobile home is not habitable and does not have verified means of onsite wastewater disposal. Number three, no percolation tests and eight-foot deep soil profile, all information are required for any lot or subdivision that will utilize an onsite wastewater disposal system. Number four is NA. Number five, the existing single wide mobile home on proposed Lot One D is not habitable and rarely accessed. Prong two determines whether special conditions exist to grant a variance. Uh, starting with number one, staff found no, there are no special conditions that would warrant granting this request. However, any future plans to develop the proposed lot would require soil profile and percolation test information to be submitted as part of the building permit application process. As the property sits, it does have the single wide mobile home that was placed in nineteen eighty-seven per a stamp survey that we request, we acquired from the property owner as well as an onsite wastewater treatment system. However, there is no construction permit or operating permit on file with Planning and Zoning Department. The applicant is working with an installer to verify the system and bring it into compliance. Proposed lots are on the right-hand side of your screen. Lot One A will be three point four two acres and vacant. Lot One B will be three point four three acres and vacant. One C, three acres and vacant. And Lot One D will be four point three two acres and contain the single wide, single wide and mobile home as well as the onsite wastewater treatment system.
Chairman, sorry, I thought you were done.
Oh. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review and no objections or concerns were received. The Board of Commissioners did approve preliminary plat twenty-one dash thirty-three on July sixth of this year. An approval of this variance will satisfy condition number five and allow the pl- planning process to continue. And with that, staff recommends denial, as there are no special conditions that exist to grant this variance request. However, if the Board of Adjustment disagrees and approves the request, staff recommends one condition being included, that this variance to waive percolation tests and soil profile information is only for proposed lots one A, one B, one C, one D of Black Metal Load number four, MS nineteen eighty-six, and not for any further development or subdivision.
Is, uh, Betty Johnson here? Uh, do you wish to say anything or just answer questions if there's any question? Okay. Uh, anybody from the public wishing to speak on this? Back to the commission.
Chairman.
Uh, Commissioner Haidkar.
I, um, believe it observes that ordinance spirit and it also ensures substantial justice, so I move approval only because she'll have to do the soil and profile percolation test later. Um, and it will, um, make it so. I don't know where that's at. So bottom line is, she still has to do it, it's just right now, um, it's not needed.
Thank you.
With one condition.
Got a motion and a second.
Mr. Chair.
Haidkar and Commissioner Lassiter. Commissioner Roskinak.
I'll just point out, just a three-acre lot would be about a hundred and thirty-one thousand square feet. And the footprint of a home and a drain field would be less than five thousand square feet. So until they have a better idea where they're going to place that home, to me, it'd be a little premature to make them go out and do a soil profile and perk test and eventually build a home and not even be in that area, so I, uh, I agree with the, with the motion.
You just said it better.
Further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item F.
Agenda item F is.
Don't want to come out of Board of Adjustment. Move to come out of Board of Adjustment?
Say it. Sorry. We've got a, a motion and a second to come out of Board of Adjustment. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Agenda item F is road construction within a section line right of way, CS twenty-one dash zero four. To construct a road within a section line right of way to wave engineer-designed road construction plans and the requirements of Pennington County Ordinance number fourteen. The applicant and landowner is Kenneth Dinkie. Site location is north of Creighton Road. Uh, the proposed road is an existing dirt and gravel driveway crossing section lines, section line between section sixteen and twenty-one. The parcel size is two hundred and eighty acres. Physical description is pasture and hills, currently zoned agriculture district and used for agriculture purposes. Access is off Creighton Road and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review. County Highway did respond stating that while the Highway Department is typically opposed to variances for roads within section lines, the Highway Department would not be opposed to a driveway crossing this section line. No other objections or concerns were received. As the road sits today, uh, there's an aerial of the, the section line crossing that we're talking about. This is, this entire, uh, roadway from Creighton Road traveling north to the subject property is the applicant's driveway. And it does cross the section line here between sixteen and section twenty-one at this point. So that road is approximately one point six miles long. It varies in width between twelve and twenty feet. Where it crosses the section line is about twenty feet in width. Uh, ditches are minimal, surface is comprised of dirt and gravel, and there are no culverts. Proposed road construction, he's not proposing to do anything with, uh, that existing driveway. Uh, so the road has been utilized as a driveway to access the applicant's family homestead since it was constructed in the early nineteen hundreds. The applicant recently removed the original homestead structure and is requesting to replace a double-wide mobile home on subject, subject property. Approval of this request will open the section line for use and will bring the driveway into compliance with state statute and county requirements. And with that, staff recommends approval. And, yeah, staff recommends approval.
Should I take it, access is off that, uh, section line?
Uh, nope, he will be taking access off of Creighton Road, right here.
Oh, okay.
And he'll be traveling the driveway. This is where he's crossing the section line for this request. He does have, uh, another request on the agenda today to cross the section line again here.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Looks like, uh, pretty rough terrain.
Commissioner Luttrell.
I'd move for approval of the request. Struck within the section line right of way. The seven conditions.
We've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item G.
Agenda item G is a follow-on request to the one that you just heard. Um, for road construction within the section line twenty-one dash zero four. Request not to submit engineer road construction plans and to waive Ordinance fourteen standards. The applicant, Kenneth Dinkie, is respectfully requesting to waive the requirements to not submit engineered road construction plans and to waive Ordinance fourteen requirements. Again, the county highway had no objections to this request.
Mr. Chair. Is Mr. Dinkie here?
No, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Luttrell.
I'd move to approve the request, but Ken Dinkie do waive the requirements not to submit the engineered road construction plans and waive the, you want me to read all of them?
No.
Okay.
Second.
Move for approval.
I've got a, I've got a motion and a second, uh, to approve, uh, further discussion. Any public comment? Back to the commission. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item H.
Item H is road construction within a section line right of way, CS twenty-one dash zero five. To construct a road within a section line right of way to wave engineer-designed road construction plans and the requirements of Pennington County Ordinance fourteen. Again, the applicant is Ken Dinkie. The site location is still north of Creighton Road and it is an existing dirt road, gravel driveway crossing section lines between sections fifteen and sixteen. And the property size is two hundred and eighty acres. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review. County Highway again stated that they're typically opposed to these variance requests, but in this case, they would not be opposed to the driveway crossing the section line. And again, this is the location of the crossing, uh, for this request. It is the same driveway that we discussed, it's one point six miles long. Uh, it is approximately twenty feet where it crosses this section line as well. Ditches are minimum, surfaces are comprised of dirt and gravel, and there are no culverts. He does not propose to do any improvements to this, uh, section line crossing. With that, staff recommends approval of road construction within a section right of way, CS twenty-one oh five with conditions.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair. Commissioner Lassiter.
Move to approve the request for road construction within a section line right of way, CS twenty-one dash oh five, which includes construction in the section line right of way of two, two ordinance fourteen standards with seven conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the discussion. Any public comments? Back to the commission. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Agenda item I is road construction within a section line right of way, CS twenty-one dash, dash zero five. To request to not submit engineer road construction plans and to waive Ordinance fourteen standards. Again, the applicant, Kenneth Dinkie, is requesting to waive requirements to not submit engineer road construction plan and to waive Ordinance fourteen requirements. And just like the last request, hi, county highway is not opposed to this request.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Roskinak.
So this is the same as item G, just a different area of the section line, right?
That's correct.
Move to approve.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second for the discussion. Any public comment? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item J.
CUSAC Environmental Planner. Item J is road construction within a section line right of way, CS twenty-one dash zero six. It is to construct a road within the section line right of way that will provide access to property located in section fifteen. The applicant and landowner is Pacific Properties LLC. Access is off of Universal Drive. Location of the property is forty-three ninety-eight Universal Drive. Uh, it's a flat area that's used as a suburban residential, it's an existing mobile home park. Uh, this was run around for interim department review. County Highway, uh, the department came back and said the Highway Department is opposed to waiving ordinance fourteen standards for road constructed in a section line right of way. Any road built within or along the section line right of way must be built to ordinance fourteen standards. This is an existing road anywhere between eighteen and twenty-four inches for gravelled surface. Uh, road construction variance to ordinance fourteen standards. They're requesting to waive the engineered road construction plans and, um, all of ordinance fourteen standards. Uh, like I said, this is an existing road and they don't plan to make any improvements to it. Uh, the road has existed since at least the nineteen, uh, nineties and has access to the mobile home park. Uh, with that, staff is recommending approval of construction within a section line right of way, twenty-one dash zero six with conditions.
Got a motion.
Say it.
And a second. Further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item K.
Uh, item K is the request not to submit engineered rural construction plans and to waive all of ordinance fourteen standards. The applicant, Pacific Properties LLC, is respectfully requesting to waive the requirements to not submit engineered rural plans and to waive the requirements of ordinance fourteen. Again, the road is an existing eighteen twenty, or eighteen to twenty-four foot wide road with a gravel surface. And the Highway Department is opposed to waiving ordinance fourteen standards, uh, for a road in a section line right of way.
Chairman.
Commissioner Haidkar.
They agree to it, it's okay?
No, uh, county highway is opposed to waiving those.
Mr. Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskinak.
Move to approve.
Got a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Luttrell. Further discussion? Commissioner Haidkar.
So first you have a section line, right? On J is the section line?
So, yeah, item J opens it up for road to do the work within the section line right of way. Item K is to waive the ordinance fourteen standards.
And this is the road they have right now?
Correct, this and.
How long is the road?
This looks a different way. It is.
It's for a mobile home park?
Correct, it's the mobile home park that you heard on item A.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm good, sorry.
Further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item L.
Item L is vacation of section line right of way BS twenty-one dash zero five to vacate thirty-three feet of the section line right of way located along the west lot line of Lot One of Larson subdivision. Uh, staff is recommending to rescind this request with the applicant's concurrence.
They would no longer wish to pursue, uh, this request.
And I do have a speaker's request from Tal Wazoric. Tal, come on forward.
So just on, I represent, uh, Salido Ranch, it owns land behind this. I'm, uh, I'm attentive just to make sure nobody came to try to take another position on it. Uh, the, it's important to leave this access because this section line access, Salido Ranch has over eight hundred acres back there that's semi-landlocked. And I noted though, too, that the Highway Department was against it and the city points out, which, uh, I was going to point out in my submissions, but planning was nice to tell me they were withdrawing or they were going to rescind it, so I didn't put a bunch of time in on submitting submissions. But that there is a future collector that's looking at in that area too. So given the way that development's pushing, um, uh, you know, Salido Ranches isn't encouraging development. They're realistic that that's what's coming. And so maintaining these access points is very important to the, to that area.
So, Chairman.
Very good. Commissioner Haidkar.
So Tal, he's just finding, um, trying to find a different solution. So, um, in that case, that's why he would, you know, he's not moving forward on it, so hopefully he can find some solution.
I, you, Mr., Dr. Beasley, I don't know why he withdrew it. We were going to oppose it. Um, one of the comments I would have made or had planned on making was he, uh, one of the reasons, the, the reason he said that it should be vacated was so he could build a house. But if you look at the lay of the plat and the land there, there's plenty of places to build a house. I mean, you know, frankly, uh, it looked to me as if it was an application just tried to prevent people from potentially using that section line in the future.
Right.
Um, and there's really no great public interest in vacating it. Uh, but you, sometimes people get them vacated on less, so.
I talked to him and, and I also sent him to Joe from Highway and then told him that Joe kind of wasn't in agreement with it. And they talked with planning and found out that people were opposed to it, that there needed to be a different solution, so.
Yeah, I, I think he's got plenty of options in there without having to vacate that, you know, and that, it does front, uh, Forest Service too. Um, there is, and I, uh, shared this with the, um, State Attorney's Office, I had a question of whether even legally you can vacate it because it provides additional access to public lands. Um, you know, that issue I will save for another day and see if it ever comes up again, so.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Um, thanks for your time. I would say that I do have commission envy about your big TV out in the hallway, though. So that's really nice. I'm sitting here thinking of, see, budget time's coming up, I'll see if I can get one of those in my budget, so.
There you go, there you go.
Thanks, Tal.
And we don't fund anything in Mead County, so. You'll have to, you'll have to find it in your own budget.
I'll look at my own budget for Tal.
Thanks, Tal. Item M. Oh, wait a minute, we need a motion. Do we need a motion on this?
Move to rescind the request for vacation of section line right of way.
I've got a motion.
Say it.
And a second. To rescind?
Yes, sir.
To, uh, rescind the request? Uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item M.
CUSAC Environmental Planner. Item M is comprehensive plan amendment CA twenty-one dash thirteen. It is to amend the comprehensive plan to change the future land use from rural residential district to low-density residential district. The applicant is Keith Lau. The location of the property is at two three oh three three High Seega Road. The size of the property that the comprehensive plan amendment is for is for one acres. Uh, it's currently zoned rural residential district and the existing land use is residential. When reviewing the criteria for a comprehensive plan amendment, we look at current zoning within a half mile. Uh, with, so within a half mile, there is suburban residential district, rural residential district, highway service district, general commercial district, open space, and agriculture district. And future land use within a half mile, there's suburban residential district, rural residential district, highway service, uh, general commercial district, open space, and ranchette. The applicant is in the plating process. Approval of this rezone will allow the applicant to continue through the plating process and satisfy conditions of preliminary plat PPL twenty-one dash seventeen. Current zoning and future land use in the area identified several parcels as suburban residential district within a half mile of the subject property. Suburban residential district requires district minimum lot size than low-density residential district. Therefore, the applicant's request appears to be in harmony with the current zoning in the area. This was heard before the Planning Commission who recommended approval. And so staff is recommending approval of comprehensive plan amendment CA twenty-one dash thirteen.
Come on.
Got a motion to approve, is there a second?
Say it.
And a second. Uh, further discussion? Take it, no public comment? Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item N.
Item N is rezone RZ twenty-one dash sixteen. It is. It is to rezone one acre from rural residential district to low density residential district. The applicant and owner is Keith Lau. The property location is two three zero zero three three High Seega Road. The property that's being rezoned will be one acre and is currently zoned rural residential district with existing land use of residential. When looking at a rezone, we look at current zoning within a half mile. Within a half mile, there's suburban residential district, rural residential district, highway service district, general commercial district, open space and agriculture district. As well as future land use within a half mile, there's suburban residential district, rural residential district, highway service district, general commercial district, open space and ranchette residential district. This was round and round for interdepartmental review, no major comments or concerns were received. Again, the applicant is in the plating process. Approval of this rezone will allow the applicant to continue through the plating process and satisfy conditions of preliminary plat PPL twenty-one dash seventeen. This was heard before the planning commission who recommended denial of the request. However, the staff feels that the applicant's request to rezone is in harmony with current zoning in the area, so staff is recommending approval of rezone RZ twenty-one dash sixteen.
Chairman.
Commissioner Adka.
I'll move approval.
I'd second that.
I got a motion and a second for the discussion. I was, I served on planning commission on this one, I was one of them that voted to deny it. Just because of the way you, if you look at the layout of that, it just does not appear to me to be in people's best interest, but.
Mister Chair.
Commissioner Roskinak.
Seems to me on the same one, there was a neighbor that really had some concerns too. And that's where I have to think hard on this one because just the respect for the neighbor.
Mister Chair.
Go ahead.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but we just on item M, we just approved to change the future land use of that area from rural to low density and then now we're telling him he can't rezonate to low density. Right? If you're, if we're thinking negative on, on item M, we just said that future use of that area can be considered low density. But if we're talking, saying, well, maybe not that particular piece, then we're kind of going against what we just approved in item M.
Correct.
So Chairman.
Commissioner Adka.
We also have suburban residential all over that area. That's why at the comprehensive plan, we had a extensive discussion on that as well and found that because of the suburban residential across the street and in the area, that low density fit like in harmony with what was going on in that property. So I think before, some of the planning commissioners had denied on, on yours, but said after they looked at the map with suburban and low density, it fit, like the staff said, with harmony in the area. So we did have pretty good discussion on it too, but I think it fits the area is my, my personal opinion.
Mister Chair.
Commissioner Roskinak.
If they didn't rezone, what would the consequence be?
The consequence would be they'd have to come in front of the board and request a lot size variance to remain rural residential or abandon the plating process.
Mister Chairman.
Commissioner LaSueur.
If it stayed rural residential, what, what would that open up?
So the, if it stayed rural residential, you'd be saying that a one acre lot could be zoned what is required for three. So you'd be limiting his setbacks and everything which could cause the variances to come into, into play, which the planning department would, would recommend denial for. We don't want variances.
Would recommend what?
Would, we'd recommend denial. And I think one thing that was different between the meeting for the, the rezone and the meeting for the comprehensive plan at the planning commission was these lots to the south right here that are immediately adjoining are also under one acre. And the major difference between low density residential and suburban residential is the lot size requirement. One requires a half acre and one requires twenty thousand square feet. But they have the same uses, same setbacks. It's just the, the lot size is different.
Mister Chair.
Commissioner Roskinak.
So evidently we, how, how old's this plant? Lot five A, lot five B, it's not that old. And seems to me this is coming in front of us and I guess my concern was is how did that five B get plated or how'd that plot get approved in the first place? So just because of the small acreage.
This, uh, this plot was actually approved by this board back in June.
That's when I...
This hasn't been filed that register of deeds yet. He has to go through this process to rezonar or get the lot size variance prior to filing. So those lots have not been created yet. It's five B is what is being rezoned, just five B. Five A meets the requirement for rural residential.
Further discussion. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Uh, votes three to two passed.
Who were the two no's?
Gary and Ron.
Roskinak and Drews. Uh, item O.
Item O is rezone RZ twenty-one dash twenty-three. It is to rezone nineteen point nine two acres from agriculture district to rural residential district. The applicant and landowners Lorraine and Doug Smith. Fitz Land Surveying is the agent, Janelle is in the audience if there are any questions. Currently, the size of the property is nine, nineteen point nine two acres and is forested and hilly. It's currently zoned agriculture district and has a residential use. When looking at future land use within a half mile, we, we look at the current zoning within a half mile. So there is suburban residential district, rural residential district, open space and agriculture district. Future land use within a half mile, there's suburban residential district, rural residential district, ranchette district and open space. This was round and round for interdepartmental review and there were no major comments or concerns that were received. The applicant is going through the planning process. Approval of this rezone will allow the applicant to continue through the plating process and satisfy conditions of layout plan LPL twenty-one dash twenty-five. Current zoning and future land use in the area identifies the subject property and several parcels as rural residential district within a half mile. Therefore, the applicant's request appears to be in harmony. And therefore, staff is recommending approval of rezone twenty-one dash twenty-three.
Move to proof.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to approve. Uh, is there any public comment? Seeing none, back to the commission for the discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item P.
Item P is layout plan LPL twenty-one dash forty-two. The request is to subdivide and create lots D one, D two and D three of Johnson Estate subdivision. The applicant and landowner is Randall Peregrin. The surveyor is Howie, is Howie Land Surveying. Currently, the property is eight point two five acres and zoned suburban residential district. Existing land use is residential and vacant. Building permits, there are no building permits. The lot is vacant and there is no on-site wastewater treatment system. For proposed lots on the right side of your screen, lot D one will be four point one nine three acres and will be vacated of any structures. Lot D two will be two point oh two eight acres and be vacant. And lot D three will be two point oh five one acres. This was round and round for interdepartmental review. There were no major comments or concerns that were received. Percolation and profile hole information and improvement or dedication of the section line right of way would be required. If the applicant chooses to waive these, subdivision regulation variance would have to be obtained. Staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request. This appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses within the area. So staff is recommending approval of layout plan LPL twenty-one dash forty-two with conditions.
Got a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Applicants here?
The applicant is in the audience, yes.
Okay. Any public comment? Seeing none, back to the commission, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item Q.
Can we take this all up in one, Brittany?
Well, there's three different parcels. They're the same requests, they're asking to rezon from agriculture to suburban residential district.
So it's twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two?
It's twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two. So item Q is rezone RZ twenty-one dash twenty to rezon from agriculture district to suburban residential district. The applicant is Pink Cabin LLC. The location is northwest of the intersection of Apple Tree Road and East Highway forty-four. The first lot is approximately six acres. The reason for this requested rezone is to allow for future plating of residential lots in the Murphy Ranch subdivision. And this request is in harmony with the surrounding and abutting current zoning, future land and future land use designations and is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. So staff is recommending approval of rezon twenty-one dash twenty. And that is actually for this lot is twenty-one, twenty.
So Chairman, can we take all three? Since our staff is approval?
I don't believe so, I think you need a motion on each one.
Move for approval.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to approve item Q. Further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item R.
Item R is rezone RZ twenty-one dash twenty-one to rezon from agriculture district to suburban residential district. The applicant is Pink Cabin LLC. This property is located northwest of the intersection of Apple Tree Road and East Highway forty-four. The property consists of pi, five point zero nine acres. The applicant has requested this rezone in order to allow future plating of residential lots in the Murphy Ranch subdivision. The request is in harmony with surrounding current zoning, future land use designations and the comprehensive plan. So staff is recommending approval of rezon twenty-one dash twenty-one.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to approve for the discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item S.
Item S is rezone RZ twenty-one dash twenty-two to rezon from agriculture district to suburban residential district. The applicant is Pink Cabin LLC. The property consists of four point nine one acres. The applicant has requested this rezone in order to allow future plating of residential lots in the Murphy Ranch subdivision. And this request is in harmony with the surrounding current zoning, future land use designations and comprehensive plan.
So Brittany, this lot is, uh, connects with the previous lot?
Yes, so this, this property right now is going through the final plating process with the city. This was rezoned at the previous commission meeting. And then there, these three lots are the final lots in the subdivision plan. They're planning to plat about a hundred and seventy-four more lots in those four existing lots.
Say that again, how many?
There, there's about a hundred and seventy-four more lots coming. Yes, and so they're, they're breaking access down to forty-four through that subdivision too. So it'll have access from Longview down to Highway forty-four now.
Okay, is there a motion?
Move for.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item T.
Afternoon again, Commissioners, Jason Tyson, Deputy Director. Agenda item T is a request to refund conditional use permit penalty fee of three hundred dollars. The applicant and landowner is Tina Roberts operating under Cal SD LLC. I believe the, this item was continued from the last board meeting. I can give you a, a kind of a recap of what the, the request is for. The subject property originally had an approved conditional use permit back in twenty seventeen to operate a vacation home rental. The property was sold in October twenty twenty. The current landowner did not transfer that conditional use permit, therefore the CUP is required in order to operate a VHR. Since it was sold, the owner has been operating the vacation home rental without a CUP. Therefore, the penalty fee of three hundred dollars was required. Ms. Roberts believed that her transfer, when she bought the property in twenty twenty, the transfer did go through so she could continually operate the VHR. Staff found that the previous owner had paid twenty dollars for an on-site wastewater treatment system operating permit and the one hundred dollar transfer fee. However, Ms. Roberts did not complete her portion of the transfer by providing a new application, a new VHR checklist, Department of Revenue Records and Department of Health inspection certificate or a local contact.
I'll move denial.
I've got a motion to deny.
Second.
Mister Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Just a question, so I'm just trying to figure out what actually happened. I read through a lot of this stuff. So property was sold. The seller came in and paid all the costs, the transfer fees, did and the hundred dollar transfer fee, right? They paid it.
For the review.
But the, the buyer lacked coming in to bring in the rest of the information. So that tells me, okay.
Mister Chairman.
Commissioner LaSueur.
Did y'all reach out to her after last time and ask for email or did she just, is this the only correspondence you've had with her? Because I, I know we talked about that, like, you know, we'd like her to come in and if she had some evidence to show us. But did she seem interested in even doing that?
No, it's your team that handled this one and she didn't give me any information that she had received from Ms. Roberts or anything beyond what she already had originally submitted.
Mister Chair.
Commissioner Roskinak.
What gets me is that I'm assuming that if she owns a vacation home rental, you know, she's doing pretty good financially. I find it a little hard to believe that she would go through all this trouble for three hundred dollars. Unless she actually thought she, it wasn't for the money, but maybe for the principal because she probably in her own mind thought that she hadn't done anything wrong, but that was just my two cents worth, but it's just, you know, it's an opinion, it's very subjective.
I, I agree with you, Ron, but that's why we continued it for a week. If it was that important, she'd come back and that's...
That's right.
Okay.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, it's denied. Items from the chair and commission members. Anybody have anything?
Oh. Let's see, we, well, last Friday, you, Lloyd and myself, we attended the Black Hills Association of County Commissioners and County Officers and had a good presentation on the marijuana implementation from planning and zoning. Gary did a good job highlighting the Missouri River Roger Water Project update and we passed the resolutions. And Lloyd and I attended this Elevate Rapid City South Dakota Legislature Workforce Housing Needs. It was about a two, two and a half hour. It was just one of those where you listened and had some municipalities get up there and explain what they were doing relative to workforce housing. And then I attended the OST Law Order Committee, which was pretty well attended. It was at the Rushmore Hotel on Mount Rushmore Road. And we, it was a good, good meeting. I think it was, it's going to be, give us some guidance going forward. We made some good connections and amended some fences.
Oh Chairman.
Commissioner Adka.
I got on Zoom with some people from, it's called Honoring Nations. It's, we visited with some people from the Harvard Kennedy School. Basically with Jerome Crowdog, Myron Poyer, Gay Kingsman, the president of the Rosebud Sioux Tribe, vice president of Yankton Sioux Tribe. We had many speakers. They wanted me to speak about how government and how we did pace law. Bottom line is, they bought two hundred and thirty-three acres of Bear Butte that day. They're working on Wind Cave and Blackout Peak for some areas that they'd go next. Very good meeting, just about why they won't take the money that is set aside based, it's a claim for the Black Hills. People say they have lots of money, why don't the tribes take it? Because it's a claim and once they take that claim, basically, they're accepting that they lost any kind of claim. Because it's a claim, and once they take that claim, um, basically, they're accepting that they lost any kind of claim, uh, to the Black Hills. So, um, very good information, um, couldn't stay for all of it. I brought one of my guys with me, um, from one of the Sioux tribes, just to sit in and see kind of what they do. But, um, that was with Mark Van Norman from PACE law. Um, I've been connected with him since PACE law with many different things with the tribes and the five tribes that have bought PACE law. They are doing a really good job, and they're doing it professionally without conflict and all that. And I really appreciate that, um, giving good information on different areas and why they're buying it. It's just because it's sacred land. The areas they're buying right now are sacred land to the natives, native community. So I respect that. So, again, Honoring Nations, uh, it was a, it was a good meeting, so, thank you.
Any other, uh, commission member reports?
Uh, Chair, I, I, the only thing I'd say is, me and Ron attended that, that OST, uh, meeting with, uh, the Law and Order Committee. It was kind of a last minute thing, and I think that Ron hit it. It, there were some talks and some communication and, and they were gonna go back to the tribe and they're gonna, they're talking about having us, having the next meeting on, uh, down in Pine Ridge. You know, something like, like the county commission or, uh, Black Hills Area County Commission did for the first time a couple of months ago. So that, that's a good start. Um, outside of some of the other meetings, I, I had a collective healing meeting on Thursday that followed. It was a busy week. We came back on Tuesday, so Wednesday was an all-day deal with Ron. He's all right, but that was a little bit too much done together. But, uh, just joking. But then, uh, Thursday was a collective healing m- meeting, uh, and these, thank God for the, the Maryland conventions, because I was able to use one of the workshops that I, that I attended in Maryland. Not only with the, the meeting, the new chief police in Pine Ridge and that meeting, but these other two meetings that I had. And I'll explain that when we go into it. But, uh, this collective healing meeting that's been, I've been into for two and a half years. We were running into some difficult stuff this last week dealing with. And so that meeting in Maryland, that, that workshop that I took really took hold for these last two meetings as far as, I think, making some progress. Because I was ready to walk in some of these meetings that I had been into, and I expressed that. But, uh, I think that workshop helped out and it actually strengthened the group. Because I did end up, on Sunday, we ended up having a, uh, a meeting or ceremony in, uh, Western Dakota with Tech. It's Healing Community Meeting. It was, it's a short meeting, and people share their healing stories in a, in a circle. And it was, it was pretty, it was pretty good and pretty intense and so. But quite frankly, I'll, I'll talk about, a little bit about that meeting that in Maryland, that, that workshop that I had that helped me get through. It was amazing to come back from that meeting, go straight into those hardships. And so it was, I, I appreciated it, so.
Yeah. Committee reports. Travis.
Well, um, I was out of town for one of them, the other one didn't have a quorum, so there's not much to report for me.
Very good. Commissioner LaCroy.
Uh, the most recent one was the four H. And the highlight of, of that is they went over some of their remaining, the possible remaining budget estimate that they may have. And they have a list of building requirement or stuff that they, if there, if there is funding towards the end of the year, they're looking for funding on. So that's where the discussion pretty much went for the, the four H meeting. And they're preparing for the, uh, fair coming up, and so there's a lot of discussion on that. But they're pretty conservative. They're looking at maybe some new lights in the other half of the building going to LED. And they're working with building some rounds and getting some estimates, some hard numbers. Um, that was the most recent, I went over those. I'll just read, uh, for the conference in Maryland was a five-day one night. Three of you guys kind of heard me give a, a quick executive, uh, report at the county commission meeting. But, uh, I'll just gotta read through what, what their press releases to give you an information of what me and Holly intended. Uh, we joined county leaders July ninth through the twelfth in Prince George County, Maryland. Uh, over two thousand people attended this, not only in person, but virtually for the National Association County, uh, of, uh, Counties Annual Conference. The first in-person since before the pandemic. So the, I, I'd said that their meeting, uh, geez, I can't even think right now. Where was the motel?
The Gaylord.
Gaylord, sorry, I'm, my mind's going all. Gaylord, National Harbor had been closed prior to that con- uh, convention. Um, so NACO in immediate, NACO immediate past president Gary Moore highlighted the year's accomplishments, including several significant policy, federal policy victories, particularly in the passage of the American Rescue Plan Act that included sixty-five point one billion in direct flexible, flexible aid to every county in America, as well as the crucial investments of local communities. NACO members elected, uh, DeKalb County, Georgia Commissioner Larry Johnson, president, and celebrated the leadership of the county officials on the front lines of the te- pandemic through the past year. When the highlights of the new president that took over is what he highlighted counties, he, he's gonna push for counties thrive. And, and what he, what he's talking about thrive, he broke it down into T means technology, H means health, uh, R is readiness, I for infrastructure, V for vulnerable population, and E for economic development opportunities. That's what he's gonna be looking at through, for NACO in whole. And that he gave a good presentation on that, I thought. Um, after eighteen months of bold leadership, counties appointed elected officials and convened to discuss strategies to drive, uh, recovery in our communities, as well as better policies and legislation on wide range of key issues. More than a dozen education workshops and meetings ex- and explored topics, including infrastructure, broadband accessibility, affordable housing, technology, reducing the number of mentally ill individuals in jail, economic development, disaster preparedness, and recovery for other topics important to counties across the country. That's a quick summary, executive summary of what, uh, the conference was. Um, my take on it was, it was very good. I had, I, you know, one particular workshop is the one that I gained the most out of, that I used when I came back right away. But we also, uh, met with our regional groups in private session. They had, uh, what'd they call them, work groups from five to six. They had a lot of different stuff this year. But I think what happened was, is what they made the conferences, it takes three years to plan a conference like that. That was huge. Five days is a long, long time. So there was some gaps in, I think, some of the workshops. Hour, uh, two hours in between certain ones. But all in all, for how it worked out, I think it was really good. And we had twelve members, uh, of South Dakota, uh, there in present, uh, during the election process. Um.
Plus you.
Yeah. You know, and quite frankly, uh, when we were electing the second vice president, you know, that's what kind of brought me up to ask you to do sort of four hours, Gary, is, you know, it's a pretty tough deal. You know, you're nationwide, you don't know these people. And me and Holly, and we had two votes, and we discussed, how should we do this? And we'd listened to both candidates. I mean, they were campaigning and, and quite frankly, my mind was, was leaning towards one, and Holly's was, you know, she has her logic and she had hers and, well, I'm not saying bad, but, I mean, we had our conversation. But then after he came into our caucus and gave his presentation, he lost my vote. You know what I mean? And I'd met him a few times through there, but, uh, that, that one-on-one and that presentation, he, he, he lost me. So we vote, oh, both ended up casting our votes for, uh, McGuire. Yeah, L.A. McGuire, she's from Minnesota, so she's gonna be our new second vice president. And now you know, folks know, they move up after the years, or hopefully we'll be presidents and we'll have somebody that's close to our states. But, uh, that was a real challenging, that was a good, good information as far as learning that. You know, some of the workshops, the, the biggest one, I had about three of them that I, I really got something out of. I wish there probably would have been more, but I think part of our, our commitment is we learned a lot of what NACO has been helping out, going to Congress for. I mean, some of the people that, uh, we had at the conference, we had, um, Camille Harris came in. I did not attend that because I didn't want to go through security. You know, I didn't want to go through that depth, so I thought, I'm not gonna do that. So, but she was there, uh, wrote down the names.
Nancy.
Yeah, Nancy Pelosi was there. Uh, well, you know, it, it probably was kind of sided more on the Democratic side, but then, you know, just the opportunity to meet, see some of these people is, is pretty cool. Uh, yeah, so Camille Harris, we had Nancy Pelosi, we had Mitch McConnell didn't make it. Uh, Secretary of Transportation Pete Buttigieg. Buttigieg, I always liked watching him talk. He's, he's very good. He, he was there, so he did good. Um, one of the things I will, I'll read this to you guys. This one helped, uh, uh, Gary and, and Ron out with Christine. I mean, this is how much, uh, Kristen, Kristi Jacobson. We were all connected around a, a group email or text message. Chris goes, hey Lloyd, I'm in, I'm in with a new Forest Service rep. Any concerns in the hills area with the new, new forest rep? And I, of course, I texted back as another meeting that said, yeah, we got concerned about the reduced yield from the forest and, and Ron's talking about ATV damage to the hills, so, and the roads. And so I passed that on nationally within the text to be able to, to get that going. So I think all in all, it's good for connections, and it, it went well. I could go over some of this, this other stuff that, uh, I wrote down, but I did bring back some literature. Um, I'll leave sitting back on the desk for you guys if you want to go through it. But if you have any questions of how it really went.
I just got one question. Didn't they, uh, have, uh, some, uh, topics relative to the payment in lieu of taxes?
You'd have to ask.
Okay, Holly, you want to pick up on anything that you want to share from the convention? Including Ron's question, if you got an answer for that?
They did. Um, that was in the Western Interstate Discussions. Um, Clint Farley is the South Dakota representative for that, and they continue to fight for full PILT funding, um, going forward. Right now, it's just a year-to-year annual appropriation from Congress. Um, but we did get our full twenty-twenty-one payment, and they'll continue to fight for that going forward, for sure.
I know they're a major advocate of that.
Yep.
And Hill City in that area, we certainly rely on that, uh, to help the school district.
Yep, absolutely.
I might just point out that, uh, in our meeting here on Friday, Clint was here. Uh, and Clint is giving up that seat with the WIR. Uh, he does not plan on running for reelection. Uh, I don't know why, he's just kind of a rookie. He's only been, uh, county commissioner for forty-seven years. So, um, Travis, can you live that long?
Almost there.
So anyway, uh, that's something that, uh, if somebody here is interested in, because that is one of the key things with them is, is that's the ones that, that includes the area that really are entitled to the, uh, PILT funds. So, uh, we'd like to have somebody very strong in that position again, so. Anything else, Holly?
It, it was a, it was a great conference. I went to some election, uh, an election session, um, a lot of ARP discussions on the funding. Um, that's, was a very big hot topic down there. Um, overall, it was a great conference. Um, thought I was gonna die on the way home on the first flight, but we made it through it.
Weather?
We're here.
Weather?
Oh, I've, I've never been through something like that before.
No, me neither.
Where'd you guys travel from?
Uh, Washington to Chicago, and we sat on the tarmac for what felt like forever. And then they came on and said, oh, we have to go back and put more fuel in because we're gonna take the long route to Chicago to avoid the thunderstorms. Well, one of our flights, the attendant came on, or the pilot came on and said, flight attendant, you need to take your seat, thinking we were gonna have some turbulence. Well, this flight, there was no warning. It was, it, we were in trouble, and we were wearing our pop, stuff was flying. It was, it was scary.
I slept through it.
Did you?
No, I fell, that, that.
Yes, you couldn't sleep through it.
That, I have to admit, that turbulence was probably one of the worst I've experienced in life, where you actually lifted you up off the seat.
We did that from Denver to Rapid City, and remember on the, what's it called? The Twilight Zone, and they said there are guys on the pl- sitting on the wing? So I was like, God, that guy's sitting on the wing, it's like Twilight Zone. That's freaking, but you actually, you, we were hitting the cea- basically, you were hitting the ceilings. And then it's like you had neck disjointment or something, because then you were swinging back and forth like that. So we were on a little prop plane though. That's why I was like, holy cow, I couldn't imagine a big one doing that.
So Holly, you can put me down for next year. I plan on attending NACO.
Well.
Well, the great news is, next year's convention is in Adams County, Colorado.
Yep.
I saw that, that's what I was gonna tell you guys.
Yeah, so, yeah.
It'll be a good one.
And, and Colorado was there in full spirit.
Yep.
Promoting the deal, and I think, uh, yeah, I think with it being that close, I mean, it would be really nice if all commissioners could make it to the best of ability and, and staff, or, you know, Holly next year.
So when you say in full spirits, you mean they brought their products with them, or?
Well, so, let me get this. The fall conference is in Salt Lake City, so they had samples of salt on their table. So, yeah, you, you talk about, they did give out some coasters and prizes that you could, at their table, that they were promoting their, their deal, but, uh.
I did get the sheriff and, and bury a pair of socks from.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, where's the gifts?
Well, they kind of had leaves on them that they might not like. I thought it'd be funny, but I don't.
Real leaves or were they just drawn on?
No, actually, we bought them, and they were at the Ross store.
Okay, moving on. I did attend the library board meeting on behalf of Travis. It was a fairly quiet meeting. Uh, they understand that Travis will be the one representing them in the future, and they, they were happy with that. Uh, they did have a discussion on their lending and fees policy, but that was deferred until August ninth. And also, they did approve a seventy-five hundred dollar annual catalog enhancement contract. And when I started listening to how, what they have to do in order to catalog all the materials they have, uh, they lost me. Because that's a monstrous type job. Um, but the other thing I did get out of that is that they and the other libraries in the county really appreciate the county support that they receive. So then we had the Central States Fair Board meeting. Uh, the report there was that ticket sales, they started the ticket sales a couple of weeks early this year in comparison to previous years. And, uh, it's been, they've been very brisk in, in the sales for the upcoming fair. Uh, all indications appear to be a banner year with, uh, top-notch entertainments coming in. Uh, numerous in, in activities, including the Extreme Bronc event. Again, this will be the third time now, uh, hosting that event. So, yeah, it was a good meeting. And then, uh, Black Hills Military Advisory Coalition, uh, they continue to work on, uh, future things as far as, uh, at, at the base. Uh, I don't, I don't think there was anything new that came out of that discussion. Just that they're continuing to make people aware of what's happening, trying to help set up for the influx of people in the buildup, uh, at the base. Uh, the Missouri River, uh, as I said on Friday at the Black Hills County District Meeting, uh, currently, Talwazoric has been hired to de- Currently, Talwazoric has been hired to develop the nonprofit corporation for the group. And he's done several of these, he's established several of these for different water districts, especially in western South Dakota. So he's a good guy to have doing that. So I suspect that soon they will be electing a, maybe five to seven member board of directors to begin with. Still trying to search out how many areas are inclined to be a part of this and submit what they project to be water needs in the future. So it's moving forward. I do anticipate that there'll probably be legislation tied to this that will be forthcoming for the next legislative session. That's all I have. Ross Connect.
I have no meetings, but I got one at two and I got one tomorrow morning at eight. Okay, so tomorrow morning at four. I had nothing.
Tomorrow morning at four?
That's an early meeting.
Tomorrow afternoon.
Wow.
I'll call you.
Commissioner Adcock.
So planning commission was good. You guys kind of saw what moved forward on that. And then we did have some discussion on towers with Charlie's not into towers very much. But we also, it's funny, when me and Megan and Brittany were going through Wyoming, there's lots of towers. And they're like three in a row and stuff like that. So they're like, check out the towers compared to us. So I think they're crucial for emergency services. They're crucial for, you know, cell services. And I think it's become more prevalent that people want them before they were just kind of a, like really going to put a tower, there's all kinds of issues with the tower. So I appreciate Charlie's discussion and his passion and what he's talking about. But I also see the other side that, you know, for the future, it's going to be something we need. Or I think they have something in the works for satellite and not having to use towers for the future. So there's some kind of different discussions in there. Anyway, got a good planning commission. Of course, there's four women, so it's a really good commission. So just kidding. Anyway, Karen is a vice chair and Rich again, does a amazing job, is the chair. So we do have.
I was going to say, Rich got chair in.
Karen, Mortimer, or not Mortimer, Karen.
McGregor.
McGregor, I also want to call her Mortimer.
She got vice chair?
Yeah.
Okay, I had a minutes for, I was reading through the minutes and they got Charlie as vice.
No, he's second.
Voted down.
He's second.
No, they didn't get a second for it, so they didn't even vote on it.
Okay.
Yeah, so Charlie got the second after Karen for.
I presume Charlie didn't want it? Or suggested that he, no?
No, the people, no, he kind of didn't vote and then everybody switched to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then I talked with the budget, remember I was saying stuff on the budget with the fairgrounds? So I didn't want to be rude and not tell them what I was thinking. But they also wanted to meet with me much and John did, and I just talked to them on the budget and some of their future plans, what they're thinking for the fairgrounds. I think it's going to be pretty exciting if we move forward. And I personally am in agreement with us doing the levy hire because of just the things they need to get done and the future of eggs. So, and then the other one thing I forgot to tell you about is the 15-second video and the 30-second radio ads that are coming out on panhandling and there's a better way to give and a better solution. Those signs will be hung east and west side. I talked to Barry, he'd like them east and west side of the care campus. This building west and by the door. Probably Sheriff said by the public safety, over by the courthouse and then on the fairgrounds. And then Bransky's going to hang signs and business owners are going to hang some of those signs. Also, the mayor decided to do different than downtown and us. We tried to work with them, but he didn't want to do different. He has something about a giving number that you can give to those solutions that we're talking about. We're more promoting our care campus and what we can do for the people. That's who the county is. So we can respect that, but we also believe that we do best. So we've been doing it for a while. We have some great people, service providers that do a great job for helping people in our community. So that's coming out pretty soon. He'll do handle, I'll give her the credit, did that. And then she'll also get pictures of them hanging the signs and then do an explanation again.
I heard one of those ads this morning already.
Did it sound okay?
Sounded all right, yeah. It's kind of quiet though, but you could hear it.
I just like it because it's not, we don't attack anybody. We just want to, you know, there's a better solution. We can help people by giving that solution instead of just giving money. That's the bottom line, so.
Can I throw in on that, just to comment, not so much that, but I just wanted to pass on a message from Mr. DeSanto. He was at our meeting last night to at the 4H and he's been consistent on that. But he, I've already passed on to the youth city council. His, his part-time work that he's doing with Wheaton Past, he's really noticed a lot of garbage. And he's frustrated. So he'd only, he, he would like to see PSAs about litter and so forth. I did pass on to the youth council executive committee. You know, at the end of August, they'll be getting back into session, maybe they'll get something going. But in back of your mind, if you ever have the opportunity to help with PSA's on garbage, he's really concerned about it. You know, Mark, he's, so it's.
It's funny you mentioned him because he, they said he, well, Scott said he works very hard. And he actually has a passion for going out there and he asks about all the different plants. Remember we were learning about the plants and different stuff. So I'm very proud of him because he's actually taken that initiative to do a lot of things. And being a commissioner now, he sees the light a little bit more on some of that stuff. Again, they love him. They think he's just, gets it done and he does it right. So kudos to Christian DeSanto.
Gary, anything else?
Moved to go in the executive session?
Yeah, do we have a motion?
Do we have something? I didn't get no paperwork.
I didn't either.
It might have been in your last week's packet.
Yeah, it's Brittany's review.
Oh, is it just for personnel reasons?
Yep. Got a motion? Did I get a motion in a second? All is in favor and indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried. Adjourned.
So moved?
Second.
Motion in a second? All is in favor and indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried.